Recording in progress.
Colleagues, good morning. We have one very important pre-Gavel item this morning, and that's the recognition and support of the Ukrainian community. I have remarks on behalf of the city council later on, but for right now, I'm going to pass this to Commissioner Rubio, who will introduce our very special guests. Commissioner Rubio, good morning.
I don't see Commissioner Rubio there.
Let's see, has she tried to log on?
Julian, can you help us?
Yeah, I'm reaching out to her right now.
Thank you.
This is pre-Gavel, so we can all take a breather for a minute while we wait for Commissioner Rubio. There. There she is. Good morning, Commissioner Rubio. You're muted.
My apologies, Mayor. I had trouble.
No worries. Good morning.
Morning. Did you turn it over to me?
Yeah, I just turned it over to me. Thanks.
Thank you. So art has for millennia helped humans grieve, heal, and eventually celebrate together. And as we consider the unfolding situation in Ukraine, we're still at the grieving stage. And this is especially true for the many Ukrainian and Slavic Oregonians who live in the Portland metro area. Two members of that community will be joining us to share some reflections. But first, a string quartet from the Oregon Symphony here to play a Ukrainian folk song, "Our Lady Pochive." The members are Shin Young Kwan, Emily Cole, Charles Noble, and Marilyn de Oliveira. And I would like to now turn it over to Marilyn to introduce the piece.
Good morning, everyone. We, the musicians of the Oregon Symphony, stand in solidarity with the people of Ukraine, and we just wanted to humbly offer this musical selection, this Ukrainian folk song, as a moment of solace.
I want to thank the Oregon Symphony for demonstrating the power of music, especially during this challenging time, and to this string quartet in particular for sharing their talents and your passion with us. That was absolutely beautiful and a fantastic way for all of us to start our day. Thank you so much for being here. And it's now my pleasure to introduce two members of our Ukrainian community who are going to give some remarks. Tatiana Tordal is a small business owner, volunteer, and community activist, and Natalia Shudrak is a public school educator. We are very pleased to have you both here today. Welcome, Tatiana and Natalia. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Are you unmuted?
I think so.
Very good.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, loud and clear. You sound great. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having us.
Did you have some remarks you'd like to make?
Yes, I first of all want to thank you for having this part of the pre-Gavel program and for your support for Ukraine. I want to remind people that today is the 21st day of Russia's war in Ukraine. In our community, we count every day. Many of us now live on Kiev time, which is 10 time zones away. Right now, it's evening in Ukraine. It's 6:30 PM, and many cities are bracing for another night of Russian bombardment. We check in with our loved ones in Ukraine in the evenings before nighttime falls, before the, you know, heaviest fire starts, and then in the morning when we hope they are still alive. It is very scary if we don't hear from people for a while. We also have a number of local Ukrainians who flew to Poland and are currently there, either helping the refugees coming from Ukraine, or some are actually in Ukraine, helping people evacuate or providing any other support. So many Portlanders and people from the Portland metro area are currently in Europe, helping Ukrainians. Unfortunately, a lot of people have already been killed, many, many people. And unfortunately, it's not just Putin. It's tens of thousands of Russian soldiers killing civilians in Ukraine. Ukraine has not seen destructions like this since the Nazi invasion in the Second World War. And, you know, it's the saddest thing to hear my parents say, "I was born during the war. I may die during the war." It's scary, very scary situation. I also want to remind Americans that this colonial war started really in 2014 with Russian occupation of Crimea. And this month, March 2022, is eight years since Russia occupied and annexed Crimea. And there is still a very colonial attitude towards Ukraine from the Russian state and many Russian people, unfortunately even here in Oregon, sometimes even from our local governments and Slavic organizations. Even the terminology that our county and our local governments use is colonial, because everyone who is coming from the former Soviet Union is called Slavic, even though this may be Jewish people, Crimean Tatars, or people from Central Asia. But they're all called by the ethnicity of their former occupier, which is still a very Soviet colonial attitude. Also, the Slavic community is all assumed to be Russian speakers and very Russian in Soviet, in their ideology. And this is sometimes reinforced by public grants and funds, like at Multoma County Library, for example, we are not allowed any Ukrainian language books, but the library funds Soviet-era newspapers and very racist white nationalist writers. It's not unusual for panel discussions about events in Ukraine not to have any Ukrainian voices. Ukrainians are sometimes still referred to as little Russians and little brothers. And the war in Ukraine sometimes is called unfortunate situations or conflict or crisis in Ukraine. So what we want to remind people is Ukraine is a separate and sovereign nation that has its own values, its own distinct-from-Russia aspirations, and its own culture. And we encourage the city of Portland and other local governments to listen to Ukrainian voices on Ukrainian matters. The motto "Nothing About Us Without Us" also applies to our Ukrainian community. We really appreciate the city of Portland's support for Ukraine, and we will work to establish a sister-city relationship between Portland and Lviv, Ukraine. We are a distinct community, and we're also very happy to be part of the fabric of the city. Thank you very much, Portland.
Thank you very much, Tatiana. We appreciate it. And Natalia, welcome.
Hi. Thank you for having us here. And my heart bleeds for Ukraine, for all of these people, all of its people. But especially what's on my heart right now is mental health support. Especially, my heart bleeds for people who live with survivor's guilt or survivor's syndrome. I don't know the exact term, but I know how it feels. And I'm pretty sure that's how my sister feels right now. She's from the Western Ukraine. My family and my husband's family are from different parts of Ukraine. My husband's family is from occupied Donetsk. And three months ago, his elderly grandparents, 87 years old, moved to Kiev. So now they're second time refugees. His mom moved too. And so when my sister looks at my husband's family, she keeps saying, "But I didn't get it so bad. Only three rockets fell near my home, but not near enough, 10 miles away," practically in her backyard, right? And so her two oldest sons are at war, 19 and 21, and she has to take care of her four youngest children, her younger children. So my question, my big question is, how can city help existing community right now and the people from Ukraine who are going to come here? Because I want my sister and her four younger kids to come here, and I also want my husband's family to come here as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you both for being here so much, and we appreciate your personal perspectives. It's very important that you're here today, and we thank you so much for it. And we wish the very best for you and your community and your loved ones in the days, weeks, and months ahead. On behalf of the city council, I'd like to read the following remarks. On behalf of the Portland City Council, we offer our support for the brave Ukrainian people as they fight for their country. The people of Ukraine deserve to live in peace, in a sovereign, independent nation. We extend our condolences to the families torn apart by this senseless war and the innocent lives already lost. Putin's unprovoked and unjustified invasion is unacceptable. We denounce all forms of military aggression. The city of Portland will welcome Ukrainian refugees with open arms, regardless of race, nationality, or documentation status. We share in the commitment to welcome anyone fleeing violence and seeking safety. Portland is home to a large and diverse Ukrainian and Russian community. We extend our support to our local Slavic and Eastern European community and to our Slavic and Eastern European employees here in the city of Portland. We recognize that even within ethnic and national groups, there's a diversity of thought and experience we share in their collective grief and trauma. Regardless of how specific community members feel, the decisions being made on the other side of the world have profound tragic ramifications for friendships and family ties forged here in Oregon and for our local community. We are grateful for all Slavic Eastern European community who reside and contribute to our rich fabric of diversity in Portland. Our city, our region, and our state are much better for your presence here. People of Portland can show support for the people of Ukraine this Saturday at 3:00 PM at Revolution Hall. There are many other ongoing community events to support refugees. Be sure to visit Community and Civic Lives and Immigrant and Refugee Program website for more information on these many events here in the city of Portland. Colleagues and friends, thank you for being here today. Thank you to the wonderful musicians who started us off this morning with a Ukrainian folk song. Thank you to Tatiana and Natalia. Thank you for sharing your personal stories with us this morning. Those personal stories are so important for all of us to be able to hear. And thank you to my colleagues for making space this morning for this important event. Thank you. Kealan, this is now the beginning of our city council session. This is the March 16th, 2022 morning session of the Portland City Council. Please call the roll.
Rubio, here. Ryan.
Here.
Hardesty.
Here.
Maps.
Here.
Wheeler.
Under Portland city code and state law, the city council is holding this meeting electronically. All members of the council are attending remotely by video and teleconference, and the city has made several avenues available for the public to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. The meeting is available to the public on the city's YouTube channel, egopdx, wwwportlandoregon.gov/video, and Channel 30. And there's many ways that you can communicate with the council. One is the public can provide written testimony. You can email our fantastic council clerk at cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. And without will there for legal counsel on the rules of order and decorum. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. The published council agenda at portlandoregon.gov/auditor contains information about how and when you may sign up for testimony while the city council is holding electronic meetings. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at this time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are requesting and representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of the testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When your time is up, the presiding officer will ask you to conclude. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being placed on hold or ejected from the remainder of the electronic meeting. Please be aware that all council meetings are recorded.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed the script hadn't been updated to include public testimony on reports.
Maybe that is something Ness we could work with the council clerk on. Or would that be legal? Maybe we have to go directly to legal. Either way, Ness will figure it out. He's a genius. First up is Communications. First individual, please, Kealan, item number 180.
Request of Peter Broberg to address council regarding supporting the foie gras ban.
Good morning.
Good morning, council members. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Peter Broberg, a Portland resident, voter, father of three, two of which are in the Portland public school system, which we really like. I'm here to advocate for the foie gras sales ban. You know, one major function of government is to establish a collection of rights and protections, things that we collectively deem are too cruel, too harmful, to be permitted in society or society as we want to live in. Foie gras should fall within this category of conduct that is too cruel and harmful to be permitted in society. Functionally, all birds that are prepared in this way endure great pain and torture throughout their lives, and almost all that are produced in the United States come from a massive factory farm in upstate New York that has more than a decade of constant violations for, you know, animal treatment laws. And finally, these facilities are rife with outbreaks of avian flu, and we should all be wary of, you know, transmitted diseases after the last few years that we've been through. So as a conclusion, foie gras is too cruel. Portland should follow many jurisdictions from New York City, the entire state of California, many countries worldwide that have banned the sale of foie gras. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here this morning. We appreciate it. Next up is item 181. Next individual, please.
Request Mohammed Atahia to address council regarding sanctuary city for refugees.
Good morning, Mohammed.
Hello, Mayor Ted Wheeler. I want to say on behalf of Taliban that you are the best bear in United States of America. In other cities, law enforcement makes it tough for us to operate, but luckily in Portland, the mayor actually supports the right of Taliban. Our experience in cities like New York and Los Angeles have been rife with law enforcement and governmental issues. But in Portland, we are able to distribute our poppy to the people of Portland. Currently, the number one place in America that we export all of our Afghani poppy is to Portland. As Taliban member, I promise to give the citizen of Portland the cleanest heroin known to man. We understand that Pfizer has the vaccine taken care of. So thank you, Mayor Wheeler, for letting the Taliban sell our poppy to your people without getting in trouble. To all my other comrades that are watching this, remember, Andy Ngo is the worst person ever, and Portland is the only place where racism is no longer exist. You are able to sell your poppy or smoke your methamphetamine or park your broken-down car on the streets of our month at time without any interference.
Kealan, can we move to the next person? I don't think we need to sit here and listen to a racial parody. This is deeply offensive, and you should be ashamed. This is absolutely racist behavior on your part. Shame on you. Next individual, please. Item number 182.
Request of Portland Request of Portland advocates for lead-free drinking water to address council regarding lead-reducing water filters.
Hello, I'm speaking on behalf of Portland Advocates for Lead-Free Drinking Water. Good morning. Where is a comprehensive free water filters program to prevent lead exposure during increased risk because of Portland Water Bureau's ALE from four months ago? I'm going to provide the background for this urgent question by quoting from three Oregon public broadcasting articles that were published November 30, 30th, 21, January 7th, and January 15th of 22 this year. Quote, "The Oregon Health Authority asked the city to provide a plan to reduce lead in drinking water after test results showed the highest lead levels the city has seen in two decades. The city's results were far above the EPA's action level of 15 parts per billion, but experts stress there is no safe level of exposure to lead, and 15 parts per billion is a regulatory, not a public health threshold. Lead has been a pervasive problem in Portland's drinking water system for years. Lead experts say Portland stands alone as the largest major city consistently surpassing the EPA's threshold. Water engineer Mark Edwards, one of the scientists who brought the world's attention to the water crisis in Flint, recently called the lead levels in Portland worse than Flint because of how long the problem has persisted. Portland Water Bureau leaders say they will speed up the timeline for their new treatment facility and distribute free water filters," end quote. So again, I'd like to ask this very urgent question. Where is a comprehensive free water filters program to prevent lead exposure during increased risk because of Portland Water Bureau's action level exceedance that happened four months ago?
Appreciate it. Next individual, please, item 183.
Request of Edward Lindsay to address council regarding violence in the city.
Good morning, Edward.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear. You sound good.
Okay, so I just want to say that Portland is the most beautiful city I've ever lived in, and I commend you for... I know it's stressful, you know, with these, you know, these right-wingers are trying to infiltrate Portland, and, you know, I always think of Portland and Seattle like as a city of art. And now, you know, these right-wingers are trying to say, oh, well, people are spray painting stuff, and they're burning cars up. Well, I look at it as art, and that is not something to be ashamed of. It is a beautiful city, and, you know, the only way to end this Ukraine thing, I just want to speak on that because we've been talking about this, is if we can all do our part and get vaccinated, because there are so many people that are still not vaccinated. My grandmother was 95 years old, and she died because those around her refused to get vaccinated because they're science deniers and conspiracy theorists. They believe that it's some depopulation goal by Bill Gates. Why in the world would somebody spend that much money to get vaccines out who is trying to hurt people? Bill Gates is a doctor, and he is a medical professional. So why would somebody say something like that about him? It sickens me. So guys, if you're watching this, you need to go do your part and get the vaccine. And I don't know why Dr. Fauci isn't getting any media coverage, because, you know what? We should be praying for Ukraine, and we should be getting vaccinated at the same time. I'm sickened that I had to go to Israel to get my fourth booster shot. And you know what? It is your social responsibility, city of Portland, United States of America, the entire world, to do that. And you know what? My only regret, my only regret is that I could not stop Breonna Taylor's killers, and we need to defend, defund the police, not defend the police, because that would be disgusting. And you know what? I have seen so much police brutality in these last two years, and it sickens me. Every single bit of a Mayor Wheeler, you have done such a good job. I'm cracking down on this. I cried myself to sleep when I realized that I could have stopped Breonna Taylor's killers, but what was I doing? I was shopping at Target. I was shopping at Target. I work at Target. After I get off, I go spend my check there. It's a direct deposit, and then I go home, and I cry myself to sleep every night because I couldn't stop Breonna Taylor's killers. And another positive note is that George Floyd has been sober for two years now. Time's up. Thank you so much.
We need to rethink communications, colleagues. It's really becoming a forum for no apparent reason. It's really unfortunate what's going on here.
We need some parameters.
Yeah, not today, but I think as a council, we need to talk about this. This is no longer productive.
I agree.
Number 184, please.
Request of Eugenie Rightnower to address council regarding permanent home for student health at Portland State University.
Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you. Dear members of Portland City Council, my name is Eugenie Rightnower, and I'm here on behalf of the Associated Students of Portland State University as the interim University Affairs Director for Student Government and as a member of the Student Health Advisory Board. The University Center Building serves as the headquarters for the Center for Student Health and Counseling and sits in the middle of the university district. A private family owns the land that the building is on and has been leasing the land to the university since the 1970s. Currently, the family receives $1.2 million each year for the land. The family is now trying to strong-arm the university into paying an increasing amount each year up to $2.4 million a year by 2028. Student enrollment rates have been declining, and the university cannot take this financial hit, so the university administration had decided, with little transparency and without consulting the Student Health Advisory Board, to relocate the Center for Student Health and Counseling to a new building with one quarter of the space available. Between 7,000 and 8,000 students a year utilize these services, and it is essentially a small hospital, and the services provided would suffer immensely from being relocated to such a small space. This is a tremendous injustice of this family using predatory and exploitative leasing practices at the expense of a public university and its students. I urge the city council members present here to consider utilizing eminent domain to offer just compensation to the family for the land and to gift this land to Portland State University to continue serving the public health needs of its students. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, and sorry you had to follow some of what came previously. We appreciate your being here and giving thoughtful remarks. All right, to the consent agenda, Kealan, have any items been pulled from the consent agenda?
One item has been pulled, 194.
194. Please call the roll on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The consent agenda is adopted to time certain... I understand the first four time certain items are to be read together. I'm seeing a head nod. Kealan, can you read 185, 186, 187, and 188, please?
185, accept a grant in the amount of $4,543,700 from the Oregon Department of Transportation and authorize intergovernmental agreement for the Northeast 122nd Avenue Safety and Access, Beach Street to Wasco Street Project. 186, accept a grant in the amount of $5,332,000 from the Oregon Department of Transportation and authorize intergovernmental agreement for the Stark and Washington Safety, Southeast 92nd Avenue to Southeast 109th Avenue Project. 187, accept a grant in the amount of $2,623,000 from the Oregon Department of Transportation and authorize intergovernmental agreement for the Northeast Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Safety and Access to Transit Project. And 188, accept a grant in the amount of $4,456,000 from the Oregon Department of Transportation and authorize intergovernmental agreement for the North Willamette Boulevard Active Transportation Corridor Project.
These are all emergency ordinances. Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. It is truly a pleasure to bring these four ordinances to council this morning to accept this funding from the federal government through the state and metro for these vitally important projects. The focus of this funding opportunity are projects that have strong community support and provide multimodal safety and access to transit improvements. I don't want to steal the staff's thunder, so I'm gonna have staff quickly walk through the funding process, the specific projects, but suffice it to say, these are all great improvements to our transportation infrastructure that community members have been begging for for a long time. I am going to turn this over to Steve. Sickathy is here, and he will present. Steve, if I screwed up your last name, my apologies. Take it away.
That was just perfect.
Thank you, thank you. And I was gonna say, Steve, I appreciate you being in a tie. It's so weird to see people with ties nowadays because we've been in these little boxes so long. You look good at council today. Thank you. Take it away.
Hello.
Mauricio, you're gonna start? Is that right?
Yeah, I think I'll start. Commissioner Mauricio de Clark, I'm a section manager in the planning division of PIBOT with me as Steve. He's a capital delivery division manager. I have a few slides just to introduce the topic, so I appreciate. Good morning, Mayor, Council, and thank you, Commissioner Hardesty, for your introduction. We have just a few slides. Basically, I'll take over the first two, in which we're gonna summarize how we got this. This started in 2019. Again, this is discretionary, meaning we have this, the region can decide how to spend the money. We have focused on active transportation and safety, and we have, you know, there's a grant process in which we have to quickly assemble ideas and talk to the community, get cost estimates, make sure that the ideas that we have match the criteria and the grants, find local match, all of that happening in 2019. And the work has continued. We received the funds to today, ending in this moment right now, so we're very excited to be here. So to summarize, the ideas, and PIBOT and the city, we work closely with the community to identify low-range needs. They get identified in our low-range plans, so we're ready, when the moment strikes, you know, to come up with plans. Still, a lot of work, right? Because we gotta match the idea to the funding and all that. But we have done that, and actually, this year, we just applied for the next cycle, and we had a consent agenda a month ago. So we have done that, and again, to get us to this point, there's more work to be done. That means to take these ideas, to really do engineering, and get consultants on board, work with more folks internally in the community, make sure that they're involved and they understand what's going on as we deliver these projects. Again, it's a team effort. This team effort includes planners, model coordinators, the community, public involvement specialists, and all that, plus Metro and all that staff who's been very helpful to get us to this point. To summarize, the grand total of funding is $17 million for the city out of a total of $35 million. So we basically, last round, we captured about 48% of the total, which is pretty good. So the next slide, I think summarizes the four projects. And then in North Portland, we have Willamette Boulevard, a bike facility on the Bluff. Then we have MLK Boulevard, safety crossing improvements, and same with Northeast 122nd and Stark Washington in East Portland. So those are the four projects, and Steve will provide more details about them, as well as an overall budget and schedule for completion. Thank you, and that's all for me.
Okay, thank you, Mauricio, and thank you, Commissioner Hardesty, and Mayor and Commissioners. Sorry for my earlier silence. I'm in the Portland building and was surprised by my screen settings, so apologize for that. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear. You sound good. And you look good. Look at you.
Checking out that suit and tie you had on. I was impressed.
I know, no, you're setting a very, very high bar for the rest of us. Well done.
Oh, you're too kind. All right, thank you. So thanks to Mauricio, with Mauricio's and his colleagues' successful with getting these grants, we have the four projects moving into design. So I'll go through the individual projects here. There's four of them. Northeast 122nd Avenue Corridor Improvements, these will be new enhanced pedestrian crossings, in some cases, signalized pedestrian crossings. Locations here shown on the map, Beach, Sacramento, Broadway Hancock, and Wasco Multnomah. As you may know, 122nd Avenue was a high-crash corridor with long distances between safe pedestrian crossings, so this project aims to fix that situation. For example, here in this picture, you can see a person trying to cross the street while a car comes out of a shopping center in an opposing direction. Lots of unsafe situations here in between the existing signals, so we'll be providing new signals at these four locations. PIBOT is currently completing a comprehensive corridor plan for 122nd Avenue. These locations were based on both public feedback and staff analysis as part of that effort. So this one is just over a $4.5 million grant and just under $6.5 million project total. The next project, Southeast Stark Washington Corridor Improvements, this is the part of Stark and Washington that is an east-west couplet in the Gateway Regional Center. Here's I-205 here on the map. This project will provide transit islands and bus lanes, protected bike lanes, improved pedestrian crossings at existing signals, and two new pedestrian crossings at 105th Avenue, ADA corner ramps, lighting, and pavement repair. You can see here, we have a $5.3 million grant and a sizable $11.4 million project total. The reason we have such a large local overmatch on that is because there's a significant amount of pavement repair scope funded by the Fixing Our Streets gas tax approved by voters. That pavement repair will be on Washington Street. The third project, Northeast Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and Safety and Access to Transit. Similar to the 122nd Avenue project, this is providing new crossings, some of which will be signalized at these five new locations, as well as safety improvements at two existing signals at Killingsworth and Fremont. This project's scope was developed in close partnership with the Seoul District Business Association. This one is a $2.6 million grant, $4.7 million total project cost.
Hey, Steve, can I, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I ask you a question just on that slide while I refresh my mind? Sorry to interrupt. It's a good presentation. Is there a sign in the middle of this, the intersection? What is in the middle of the intersection in that depiction?
In this image, this is, this is an example of what the crossing could look like at Northeast Mason Street, where pedestrian, people walking and on bicycles and mobility devices could cross the street. Cars would be needing to take a right turn, so these are concrete.
Okay, so that's, those are barriers except to bikes, I would assume, and then that's a directional sign in the middle.
That's exactly right. Of course, conceptual, but yes, that is correct. These are concrete barriers forcing right turns for vehicles, but through movements for pets and bikes.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Steve.
Of course, Mayor. And then the final project here, North Willamette Boulevard Active Transportation Corridor, this will provide three miles of protected bike lanes for all ages and abilities on the Willamette Boulevard corridor here from Rosa Parks Way along the Bluff through University of Park and University of Portland here, all the way to Richmond Street and St. John's, along with new crossings and better bus stops. This one is a $4,456,000 grant and just over $6 million in project, total project cost. And here you can see the financial totals. As Mauricio mentioned, we're bringing in just under $17 million of federal grant money to the city of Portland. We're matching that with just under $12 million for a total investment of nearly $30 million in transportation improvements in these neighborhoods. And just, just as a reminder and to kind of broaden out the context here, this is a grant program that's on typically a three-year cycle, and these projects hopefully will be joined by projects that this council authorized our grant applications for a few weeks ago. investment of nearly thirty million dollars in transportation improvements in these neighborhoods. And just, just as a reminder and to kind of broaden out the context here, this is a grant program that's on typically a three-year cycle. And these projects hopefully will be joined by projects that this council authorized our grant applications for a few weeks ago on seven additional projects. So just showing this combined map to show our continued quest to seek grant funding to solve transportation problems in our city. Schedule moving ahead, after this, these grant authorizations, we'll iron out some of the final scope details. We do intend to issue a request for proposals for design engineering services for three out of four of these projects. There will be public involvement to inform some of the final design decisions on these projects. There will be public involvement, touchpoints throughout the project. And then moving into about two and a half years of design engineering, right-of-way acquisition, which is primarily limited to just temporary construction easements, and then going to bid for construction in 2025. That sounds very far away, but time flies and this is kind of a typical timeline for a large capital project, which these four are. So with that, thank you for your time and happy to take any questions.
Colleagues, any questions? Seeing now at the moment, Kealan, how many, Commissioner Hurst, then Commissioner Ryan. And Kealan, could you also let me know how many people are signed up for public testimony on these four items?
I just wanted to appreciate the very thorough presentation. As a transportation commissioner for the last fifteen months now, what I realized is how much work goes into the front end long before we actually move any dirt at all. And I gotta tell you, this is an awesome team that we have leading these efforts. So I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you. Impressive. Appreciate the hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner Hurst, Commissioner Ryan.
Yeah, thanks. And thank you, Steve, for the presentation. I just have a question about engagement with neighborhoods. I drive along Willamette Boulevard quite a bit and I just want to know what did that look like in engaging the neighbors, the neighborhoods along Willamette Boulevard, about the update? Just curious.
Yes, that, thank you, Commissioner. That, that project will involve a significant amount of outreach because there are trade-offs that we need to discuss regarding the allocation of space in the roadway regarding on-street parking and bike lanes. So this one will have a major outreach effort early in the project, so now, so that people are not surprised when we're getting towards the end of the project, let alone construction. So yes, that will take the form. We have not designed the outreach process yet, but it will be significant for this project.
If I may add, Commissioner, we have an active project, planning project, North Portland motion, and we've already engaged the community and let them know that this is coming and we already have started conversations in the area.
Okay, thank you. It's quite a tight fit, as you know, on that Boulevard. And we have a tendency to keep adding and there's only so much room. So I'm glad you're, and that becomes a safety issue, as you know. So I'm glad you're looking at the nuances of that particular route.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Kealan, how many people do we have signed up for public testimony?
No one signed up.
Very good. Any further discussion on this? Commissioner Ryan, I think you just left your hand up, correct? Got it, okay. One eighty-five, please, emergency ordinance call the roll.
Rubio.
I want to thank Commissioner Hardesty and P-Bot for bringing this forward. And thank you, Mauricio and Steve, for the great presentation and the work. It's really exciting to see these plans. These improvements are highly needed and also adds to the multimodal options within our infrastructure that moves us toward our safety, access, and climate goals. So it's a win across the board. So I look forward to seeing the projects move forward and I know our neighborhoods will as well. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. You know, you gotta get it while you can, so there's clearly a lot of money on the table. You know, this is big. It's like nearly seventeen million. I just did my little numbers right when I was looking at this. And, you know, it's important to seize the moment. So I'm glad we're looking, of course, at multiple options and having safety as a concern. We gotta keep moving. And so again, it's an opportunity and I'm glad that P-Bot's been at the table to be a big player in leveraging these funds from the federal government and matching them locally. Thanks. I vote aye.
Hardesty.
I just want to take a moment to really appreciate what it takes to actually get to this point, to be in front of council with five major projects that the community has been begging for for decades. I really appreciate the hard work, the thoughtfulness. As I know, federal grants are very competitive and I just want to tip my hat to P-Bot that you got almost half the dollars that were on the table. So that says something about the effectiveness of your efforts. What I know is that you work deeply with community and you will on all these projects. And I am really excited about seeing these projects through to completion. So I am very happy to vote aye. And I want to say again, thank you, Mauricio and Steve for the great presentation and the great work that we'll continue to do once we get these disapproved. I vote aye.
Maps.
I want to congratulate Commissioner Hardesty and P-Bot for winning these grants and moving these important projects forward. I'm glad to see these long overdue improvements move closer to completion. I'm happy to vote aye.
Wheeler.
I want to thank Commissioner Hardesty and the great team at P-Bot for your hard work on this. Obviously, these are significant traffic as well as safety improvements for the community. I think it also will lead to more activation of these particular areas in a positive sense. I want to thank Mauricio and Steve for great presentations and hard work on this. I love to see people come in front of the city council who are well-prepared, thoughtful presentation, easy to understand, and a compelling face. And with that, I vote aye. Please call the roll. The ordinance is adopted. Please call the roll on one eighty-six, also an emergency ordinance.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan. Hardesty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. One eighty-seven, please call the roll.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. One eighty-eight, please call the roll.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Item number one eighty-nine, which is a proclamation.
Proclaim March twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two to be LGBTQ plus Health Awareness Week.
Colleagues, today we are bringing attention to the importance of the health and wellness of our LGBTQ plus community. March twenty-first, twenty-two kicks off LGBTQ plus Health Awareness Week with the theme "Live Out Loud for LGBTQ Health." The last few years have been unlike any other in our history. The pandemic has affected all of us, but has hit our marginalized communities even harder, including our LGBTQ plus community. The pandemic exacerbated the already steep inequities within our healthcare system. It's important for us to identify and call out disparities in health services to help address these issues at a personal and at an institutional level. Today, we focus our attention on the wellness of our LGBTQ plus community. We have an esteemed panel of guests from the community with us today to talk about the amazing organizations and hard work being done to support the LGBTQ plus health in our city. I'll now turn this over to Lex Yakasowski, the city's first LGBTQ plus policy analyst from the Office of Equity and Human Rights. I know Lex has been working very, very hard on these and many other issues and I appreciate the great work. Welcome, Lex.
Thank you so much, Mayor Wheeler and Council. Good morning, everyone. My name is Lex Yakasowski. I use they/them pronouns. And as the mayor said, I am the city's first LGBTQIA+ policy analyst. I'm so grateful for the time that you all have set aside this morning to honor LGBTQ plus Awareness, Health Awareness Week and for the presence of some really great community advocates and joining us today. Particularly, I'd like to thank Jonathan Froxweig from Cascade AIDS Project for elevating the need for this proclamation. This week is recognized across the country as a time for communities to learn about and renew their commitment to the well-being of the LGBTQ community. This council and supporting the foundation of this my position, the LGBTQIA+ analyst position, asserted your commitment to creating a healthier Portland for LGBTQ plus folks in our community as well as our LGBTQ, my colleagues here at the city, city employees. With your support, I've been able to advocate for the design of a new culturally-specific human resources consultant position to partner with me to improve the experience of our LGBTQ plus applicants and employees, furthering the goal of becoming an employer of choice for our LGBTQ community. With your support, I've also been able to work alongside the benefits team to develop a gender-affirming care and culturally-specific resources employee landing page to make it easier for employees to navigate and learn about gender-affirming healthcare coverage that they are able to receive through the city. With your support, I've also been able to support the police bureau's launch of Directive six forty dash three eight, which provides guidance for police interactions with members of the LGBTQ community. And with your support, I've started designing LGBTQ plus specific educational opportunities for city staff that will make the city a healthier place to work for LGBTQ employees and also create a better experience for LGBTQ community members when they interact with different bureaus, public-facing bureaus that the city runs. And of course, our work's not going to end here, but I wanted to take a moment this morning to uplift just some of the ways in the last nine months, together, we've been able to move the dial in making Portland a safer and healthier place for LGBTQ community and also our city employees. With this position being the first at the city to focus on LGBTQ equity, there has been and continues to be a huge need for internal support. And as this body of work develops, I plan to work with all of you to increase opportunities and resources to push for better health outcomes within the LGBTQ community at large in Portland. At this point, I would love to introduce Jonathan Froxweig, who will introduce our panelists and facilitate the rest of our proclamation today. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Lex. Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and the Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Froxweig and I'm the Public Policy and Grants Manager for Cascade AIDS Project and Prism Health. I want to start with a quick plug for the Meaningful Care Conference, which is a day-long training event that aims to promote LGBTQ cultural competency in healthcare and social services. This conference, which is organized by a coalition of local LGBTQ health organizations, will take place virtually on March twenty-ninth. So for anyone out there on the internet watching this hearing, you can learn more at meaningfulcare.org. As an advocate for an LGBTQ plus health organization, I often find myself educating members of the public about the health disparities that our community continues to experience. Many people believe that because cultural acceptance of LGBTQ people has increased, we no longer face systemic homophobia and transphobia, but research findings tell a different story. For example, lesbian, gay, and bisexual adults in Oregon are more likely than their straight counterparts to engage in chronic disease risk behaviors, like smoking, commercial tobacco. And almost twice as many lesbians, gays, and bisexuals as heterosexuals report frequent mental distress. At the same time, LGBTQ plus people are less likely than straight people to have a regular healthcare provider. In a national survey, more than half of lesbian, gay, and bisexual respondents and seventy percent of transgender and gender non-conforming respondents said they had experienced at least one type of discrimination in healthcare, from being refused needed care to being blamed for their health status. Community organizations such as my own, Prism Health, the Equi Institute, and Quest Center for Integrative Health are on the front lines of addressing these inequities in Portland. Today represents an opportunity to hear from us about our community's needs and how the city can help meet them. To that end, I will note that Prism Health has requested funding from the city in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three to support the expansion of our health center to a second location in the historic Alina District. And I want to thank you in advance for your consideration of that request. I also want to thank you just so much for taking time this morning to raise awareness of LGBTQ health. So with that, I will hand it over to my colleague, Lindsay Cipos, the Gender Care Coordinator at Prism Health. Lindsay, take it away, please.
Hi, good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. Is my volume okay for folks? Perfect. Yeah, my name is Lindsay Cipos. My pronouns are she/her and I'm the RM Gender Care Coordinator at Prism Health. Prism is a community, community health center who provides integrated primary care and behavioral health services. While our services are open to all members of the community, we are largely known for the affirming care we provide for the LGBTQ plus community. I wanted to first start by thanking the city for your support of Prism in the past. And I also wanted to take a moment to share what the impact of that support means for our community. In my nursing role at Prism, I provide direct patient care as well as support for transgender, non-binary, and gender diverse folks as they navigate primary care services, sometimes for the first time, as they access gender-affirming services and connect with social supports. More than a third of our health center's primary care patients and almost two-thirds of patients in our behavioral health program identify as trans or non-binary specifically. Even in a city as friendly as Portland, many of the patients I work with have received unaffirming and traumatizing care. This has far-reaching and long-term costs, not only to that individual, but to our community at large. Even if they have found an affirming provider somewhere, that doesn't necessarily mean they didn't experience gender identity-based discrimination with any of the countless individuals they interacted with during that visit. So for example, front desk staff, a medical assistant, or that that provider's skill, clinical skills and knowledge base were up to date on the unique recommendations of services like preventative care for that individual. What I think makes Prism special is that our clinic provides an affirming experience from the waiting room to the exam room to the back office. Gender care is fully integrated as opposed to, as opposed to a specialty that one of our providers has. In part because there has been support for my position, we are able to spend more time with patients than a typical medical model allows for. For example, more capacity to support folks while providing teaching around injecting hormones or helping patients address social determinants of health, like transportation or housing. It also just helps to have a little more space to break down some of those barriers for folks who haven't ever had access to affirming care. Many of the folks I work with came to Portland specifically because of its stature as an accepting and friendly city. Some had known that they wanted to medically transition for years but have been unable to do so because it was physically or emotionally unsafe. I think what's going on in Texas is a really good example of that. As a nurse, I'm often inadvertently there with folks during their most exciting times and also their darkest times. One of the biggest joys in my role is when I'm able to share in the emotional moment some folks experience after doing their first hormone injection. Being there for someone as they describe the relief and pure excitement they feel, knowing that they are finally in a city where they feel safe enough to truly explore themselves is something really special. I hope that together we can continue to do everything we can to make Portland a place where folks can live their fullest and truest lives. Thank you for sharing some of your time with me today.
Thank you, Lindsay. Next up, we have Scott Moore, Community Affairs and Policy Officer.
Services to people living with HIV, the LGBTQ plus population and low-income individuals across the metropolitan area. Today, I'd like to highlight the ongoing affordable housing crisis in Portland and its impacts on marginalized populations such as the LGBTQIA+ two-spirit communities, specifically for individuals seeking addiction services. We know that folks can't create change they desire without appropriate housing during treatment, more so for marginalized people, both in the BIPOC and LGBTQ plus populations. At Quest, we have found that real change can occur when individuals are supported by culturally responsive services that include housing. More so, we know it can be done cost-effectively, approximately one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year, which includes a house manager, peer support specialist, and behavioral health services, along with rent free to the clients. In two thousand and nineteen, Quest Center opened the first recovery home for LGBTQ plus individuals in the region with a focus on transgender and non-binary individuals. The home houses ten to twelve people and provides culturally-appropriate wraparound behavioral health services. Today, over fifty percent of the clients who completed treatment that lived in the house have since moved on to permanent housing. Next month, Quest will open a second home, providing transitional housing for clients continuing services and seek, while they seek permanent living situations. I ask the city of Portland to work with community-based clinics such as Quest Center to provide more houses, either through funding for long-term leases of new or existing structures for more culturally-appropriate sober recovery homes. These homes need be in the neighborhoods where they grew up, where the clients grew up, or where they have established community ties. Additionally, funding for behavioral health wraparound services through funding opportunity to organizations working to increase access and capacity. This year, Quest Center was, after many years, able to move into our first owned building to house all of our services under one roof. And later this year, we'll be moving into the old Planned Parenthood House. And later this year, we'll be moving into the, uh, the old Planned Parenthood House, uh, building on, uh, near 50th and Foster. So we have a proposal for the Portland Clean Energy Fund for green improvements to the building, and we hope that you will take it with serious consideration. On behalf of my clients, the board, and staff at Quest Center, thank you for your time and, uh, and your commitment today. Best.
Appreciate it, Scott. And finally, uh, we have Katie Cox, Executive Director of the Equi Institute.
Hello, um, my name is Katie. I use they and she pronouns. Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. I serve as the Executive Director of the Equi Institute and am also a member of the PDX Trans Housing Coalition. The Equi Institute facilitates a community health worker program serving transgender, non-binary, intersex, queer, BIPOC, and disabled people experiencing houselessness. PDX Trans Housing Coalition is dedicated to building solidarity and networks of care through resourcing that increases the safety, survival, well-being, and empowerment of unhoused trans and queer folks. As part of the Creating Conscious Communities with People Outside Coalition, otherwise known as C3PO, the Equi Institute and PDX Trans Housing Coalition were two of the organizations that helped establish and operate the C3PO Queer Affinity Village. I appreciate the council's recognition of LGBTQ plus health awareness week today. As someone who has been working in the intersection of health and housing for the last seven years, I hope that you all take this opportunity to connect the ways in which the city's housing and houselessness policies can promote LGBTQ AI two S plus health and well-being. We know that stable supportive housing serves as a foundation for good health. I have seen firsthand in the queer affinity village how access to basic needs, um, such as a roof over their head, safety, peer and health support, food and hygiene, gives residents the bandwidth to address more complex needs like obtaining insurance coverage and engaging in primary care. We also know that queer and transgender people are overrepresented among people experiencing houselessness in Portland. The National Transgender Discrimination Survey reports that of the trans respondents living in Oregon, twenty-three percent reported becoming homeless because of their gender identity or expression. Transgender adults experiencing houselessness increased eighty-eight percent since 2016, and transgender adults experiencing unsheltered houselessness has increased one hundred and thirteen percent in the same period. I expect these numbers will continue to rise as trans and queer folks begin to flee states like Idaho, Texas, and Florida due to their anti-LGBTQ legislation. Despite this disproportionate representation, the city's houselessness policies do not adequately take into account the needs of transgender people experiencing houselessness. For instance, the Queer Affinity Village is the only dedicated low-barrier shelter in Portland for adult queer and trans people, and its waitlist is six to eight months long. Furthermore, many city-funded shelters are gendered, making them inaccessible to non-binary people and unsafe for transgender people. Trans folks are often placed into the gendered unit according to their sex assigned at birth. For example, a trans woman I know who, uh, was staying at a women's shelter was harassed by other residents so badly without the shelter staff intervening that she felt she had returned to living outdoors. We need dedicated and diverse housing options for our LGBTQ AI two S plus community members. To truly promote the health of Portland's LGBTQ plus community, the city must consider the most marginalized members of that community when making housing and other policy. To that end, I urge you to continue listening to LGBTQ AI two S plus community members and empowering us to make our own change beyond this one week. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you to all the panelists, and I believe Mayor Wheeler will read the proclamation now.
I will do so. First, I want to thank you, Lex, Katie, Scott, Lindsay, and Jonathan for being here. And before I read the proclamation on behalf of the city council, my colleagues would probably like to chime in. We'll start with Commissioner Hardesty.
First, thank you, Lex, for putting together this incredible panel of folks. Um, I really appreciate, uh, the very specific information each of you shared. Katie, I, I, I want to address you directly because I have to say the affinity villages are near and dear to my heart because Mayor Wheeler and I, those, uh, folks may not know, but the C3PO camps were the very first new beds that were added at the height of COVID. And when we developed the C3PO camps, uh, it was very intentional to have a place where our, uh, 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 our gay lesbian and, uh, folks would be able to go and just be, right? And, and deal with the issues of being houseless rather than dealing with other, all the other discriminatory issues. I hope that as we continue to unpack the issues around fragile housing for folks in our community, that we will continue to use models like C3PO. As someone who's been on the board at Human Solutions for over a decade, I can tell you that many of our houses folks work every single day. Working is not the issue. The issue is they can't afford to live in the city. With the median family income at ninety-six thousand nine hundred for a family of four, it is absolutely almost impossible for someone working fifteen dollars an hour to have the resources to move into a place without public support. And so I am grateful for each of you today, uh, for being here. Um, and it occurred to me that, um, I, I have a question. Uh, what can the city do? I mean, I, I feel the, um, the, uh, weight of the silence of this council around all this anti-stuff that's happening all over the country, um, where there's anti, uh, uh, you know, you know what I'm talking about. It's like we got craziness happening, and I feel like as a council, we have a role. But what I'm seeing across, across the country is to silence progressives. And I would like your advice on what you think we as the council should be doing to elevate the insanity that's happening across the country. I do not want the assumption that because we haven't made a council statement that think that we're in any way, shape, or form supportive of either the, uh, anti-race training or anti-anybody else, right? Um, so any help you can give us, uh, any advice, I would greatly appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you, Mayor Wheeler, for bringing this important proclamation forward. And I also want to appreciate Lex, um, and also Jonathan, Lindsay, Scott, and Katie for this very, very important presentation, and also Lex specifically for their work on the presentation, on the proclamation. Also want to acknowledge Cascade AIDS Project and all the other, um, agencies here that have been leaders in this work for decades. We're so grateful for all the work that you do in the community, um, and you truly are, um, serving, uh, our most vulnerable communities and doing it so well and with care and love and integrity. And so we appreciate you for, for the work that you do. LGBTQIA plus leaders have made progress over the years in breaking down the stigmas, uh, surrounding LGBTQIA plus health and community, but it's really not, um, the job of these communities. It's, it's the job of everyone to do this work internally on themselves. And we acknowledge this every year that we still have work to do. But the work really still remains for us to truly tackle, um, these disparities and these stigmas with action. And these disparities should alarm us all, um, and we need to do our part to, um, open up dialogue around them. And it starts by moving into action, as I was reminded, um, earlier this week by a very strong and committed group of trans identified leaders that we need to commit to exploring opportunities throughout the city to elevate, um, uh, this focused work, LGBTQIA plus focused work at the city of Portland specifically. I agree with, uh, what Commissioner Hardesty said, we have a role to play, and we represent everyone in the community. And that includes this particular, these particular communities. I also want to acknowledge the critical role that, um, Lex and their leadership plays here at the city as well. Their role is vitally important to creating a workplace and policy culture full of inclusion of the LGBTQIA plus communities in government, and I look forward to supporting their work in the year ahead. And I also just want to, um, again, appreciate everyone's work here today. We honor and thank each one of you, and also remember those that have dedicated their lives or lost them in search of, of, um, LGBTQ plus health justice. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Commissioner Maps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, I'm proud to join you in declaring March twenty-first through March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two to be LGBTQ plus Health Awareness Week here in Portland, Oregon. This year marks the twentieth anniversary of the LGBTQ plus Health Awareness Week. The purpose of this week is to bring attention to the LGBTQ plus community's unique health needs and challenges. For example, compared to their straight neighbors, members of the LGBTQ plus community are more likely to be uninsured or underinsured. They are more likely to suffer from alcohol and drug abuse, and they are less likely to receive preventative healthcare services. Now, despite these grim realities, in recent years, Portland has made important strides towards LGBTQ plus healthcare equity. For example, in two thousand seventeen, the Cascade Age Project opened Oregon's first primary healthcare clinic specifically focused on the needs of the LGBTQ plus community. And in two thousand twenty, OHSU was recognized as an LGBTQ healthcare equity leader by the Human Rights Campaign Foundation. And in two thousand twenty-one, this very city council anonymously passed an ordinance that makes it easier for LGBTQ plus employees to access fertility and family planning services. And we made it easier for LGBTQ plus staff to take advantage of our bereavement leave program. Now, while Portland has made important strides towards a more equitable healthcare system for LGBTQ plus Portlanders, LGBTQ Healthcare Awareness Week is a reminder that much work is left to be done. Colleagues, that's why I'm glad to join you in declaring March twenty-first through March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two to be LGBTQ plus Health Awareness Week here in Portland. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for bringing this forward. Want to start off by thanking Lex for your leadership in your brief time here, nine months. You are making a big difference. You are strategically leveraging internally and, most importantly, with community stakeholders, which are fulfilled today, to make our city a safe place to thrive for LGBTQI community. Thank you, Jonathan, to call out the health disparities that often begin with the simple notion of just being completely shut out, discrimination. Thank you, Lindsay. Always good to hear, directly from a nurse. Your outreach and direct services to the trans, non-binary, non-binary community is so inspiring and clearly so needed. I'm grateful that my hometown is a refuge for many. Thank you, Scott, for your leadership at the Quest Center. I appreciate how you connected stable housing to recovery. And Katie, your leadership at Equi Institute, again, connecting stable housing to moving forward in life. I'm very proud of the work our office is currently doing to improve the services and the outcomes for those living at the queer affinity village. As many of you know, I'm grateful to be alive myself. I took an HIV test in nineteen eighty-six that came out positive, discovered that it actually happened in nineteen eighty-two, somewhat known as a long-term survivor. I bring that lens to this conversation. And today, I want to actually take this moment to tell a story of a very important person in this community. We have to remember we live on shoulders. There's been many people doing this fight for decades. So I'll use my time to talk about someone who retired this week after being on the front line serving our community that stretched to have an impact here locally and internationally. Her name is Maria Cosmatatos. Maria's family came to the United States from Greece, and they settled in Inglewood, California. Their one daughter, Maria, went on to study in the South Lion, UCLA, to be exact. One reason I root for the Bruins is March Madness. She moved up north to take a role as an HIV nurse at OHSU, which is where I met her in the nineties. She then pivoted to Monuma County's HIV clinic, where she served those with the least, managing HIV and often severe mental health and substance abuse challenges for twenty-seven years. For those twenty-seven years, she opened her head and heart to the thousands of patients and gave them hope for another day with a promise of a future. Maria's twenty, thirty-seven years service to our community did not stop, stop here locally. She'd led the effort to put action behind her sister, sister-city relationship with Mutareh Zimbabwe to set up a rural HIV clinic in the nineties, and it's still thriving today. So I dedicate today's LGBTQI Health Awareness Week to a Portland treasure, a global healer, and a dear friend, Maria Cosmatatos. I want to end by saying, yes, we all have a role to play, and it was very encouraging to hear all of the colleagues say that. I look forward to partnering with you to make sure next, next year's presentation is rich with current outcomes. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Thank you, colleagues. And again, I want to thank Lex, Katie, Scott, Lindsay, and Jonathan for being here and helping to draft this proclamation. I also want to acknowledge Seraphie Allen from my office and especially Ajah Blair from my office for diligent work on this proclamation. Now, it's my honor to read it on behalf of the Portland City Council. Whereas our society marginalizes people who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or another non-dominant gender or sexual identity. And whereas, for many LGBTQ plus people, this marginalization results in trauma, social isolation, economic instability, and other negative social determinants of health. And whereas, many LGBTQ plus people lack access to self-welcoming and knowledgeable, to safe welcoming and knowledgeable healthcare. And whereas, as a result, LGBTQ plus people experience a broad array of health disparities, including disproportionately high rates of HIV, cancer, and mental health issues. And whereas, these disparities have the deepest impact on transgender and non-binary people and LGBTQ plus people of color. And whereas, among cities in the United States, Portland has the second-largest percentage of LGBTQ plus people. And whereas, the city of Portland strives to make our community one where LGBTQ plus people are healthy and thriving. And whereas, the city can positively impact LGBTQ plus health through its housing, public safety, economic development, and other policies. And whereas, March twenty-first through twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two is recognized across the country as National LGBTQ Plus Health Awareness Week and is a time for communities to learn about and renew their commitment to the well-being of the LGBTQ plus community. Now, therefore, I Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim March twenty-first through twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two to be LGBTQ plus Health Awareness Week in Portland and encourage all residents to observe this time. Thank you all for being here today. Next queuing, item number one nine zero is an emergency ordinance.
Authorized grant application in the amount of fifteen million dollars from the United States. From the United States Department of Transportation to fund local streets at Broadway Corridor.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I need to make a motion to accept the substitute, uh, a substitute Exhibit C, Exhibit C.
I'll second your motion. Any discussion on the substitute? Seeing none, please queue and call the roll on the substitute.
Commissioner Ryan, Maps, did you have a question before we went? I saw you, so you should have gotten your pack, in your packet, uh, your council packet, a, uh, a, uh, Exhibit C substitute.
Okay.
Do you see it?
I, I do. Thank you.
You're welcome. I saw that book. I didn't want us to.
I appreciate, I appreciate your looking out for me.
I'm going with the flow. Uh, I just know that eventually I'm supposed to say something to get this started, correct?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, get to you in a minute, Commissioner Ryan.
Oh, I was muted.
So please, please call the roll first on the substitute. Queuing.
Rubio.
Hi.
Ryan.
I'm.
Hardesty.
I.
Maps.
I.
Wheeler. Wheeler.
Hi.
The substitute is now on the table. Commissioner Hardesty, did you want to complete your remarks?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, let me just say that this is a, uh, there is no change to this lid boundary. This is a lid that is being created by people who want it. I have Steve here to answer any questions that folks might have.
All right, very good. And I'd like to make some opening remarks, and then I'll turn it over to Commissioner Ryan to make some opening remarks as well. First of all, I'd like to say thank you, Commissioner Hardesty, for your leadership on this item. I'd like to emphasize that a grant awarded to fund local streets in the Broadway Corridor would help advance a project that's a priority for me and for my administration. Redevelopment of the fourteen-acre former U.S. Postal Service property, which is at the heart of the Broadway Corridor District, represents what I believe is one of Portland's most significant prospects to further an equitable economy, something we talked about a lot here around the city council dais. This is done by advancing wealth creation opportunities through construction, development, and teneting, creating a vibrant and welcoming neighborhood, and supporting living wage jobs. Given that this effort will lead to a considerable amount of affordable housing, uh, I would also like to turn this over to Commissioner Ryan to say a few words. Commissioner Ryan?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. As, as my colleagues are aware, the Portland Housing Bureau is the co-owner of the U.S. Postal Service site at the Broadway Corridor. Securing this grant would go a long way towards re-realizing the first phase of affordable housing development on a parcel owned by the Housing Bureau, and it will leverage Metro's affordable housing bonds to create more than two hundred housing units affordable to households with little or no income up to sixty percent medium income. I will now turn this back to Commissioner Hardesty and her staff to present. It's a wonderful multi-bureau effort. Thanks.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, I may need, uh, the council's, uh, uh, direction, uh, a legal counsel direction on what I did, because the motion that I made is not for what we're discussing at this moment. I was premature. It's actually for another agenda item, which may explain why Commissioner Ryan and Commissioner Maps were looking at me kind of strangely. Is it, what's your advice, city attorney, about how I correct my error?
Um, just give me one second. I'm sorry, Commissioner Hardesty. I was trying to catch up and make sure that we're on the same page there.
Let's do this. Let's, let's table that, and let's just remake the motion on the appropriate item, and then we don't have to mess with it. Well, it'll, consider that a dress rehearsal. Now we're good at it.
Okay.
Go ahead and just tee up the presentation.
Yes, I will. Uh, let me just say Steve is back again, uh, to provide us another fabulous presentation on what the potential could be with this RISE project, right? And I'm very excited about us exploring this potential as we explore other opportunities around housing people can afford to live in. I will turn it over to Steve now for his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, good to be with you again. Steve Sigaty here, Capital Delivery Division Manager at P-Bots. I hope that my screen share is more successful this time. Sounds like my audio is good. And thank you for solving the mystery of Exhibit C. I was feeling underprepared for that, so thank you. Okay, let me just make this larger. Is that looking okay?
Looks perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Uh, well, we're here before you, uh, in a partnership with Prosper Portland. And in fact, uh, I believe we have Lisa Obwaf and Sarah Harple and potentially others, uh, with Prosper Portland with us in the meeting as well to authorize our grant application in the amount of fifteen million dollars to the U.S. Department of Transportation to fund local streets, uh, development catalyzing street infrastructure at the Broadway Corridor. The grant we're going after is called RISE. What is RISE? It stands for Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity. It is a U.S. Department of Transportation grant. This round in federal fiscal two thousand twenty-two, there is one point five billion dollars in discretionary funding available. This round was authorized by President Biden's Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. Previous similar programs you may have heard of were called Tiger and Build. Uh, the city's been pretty successful in going after these. Uh, we had Tiger grants for the Moody Avenue Extension in South Waterfront back in two thousand nine. Uh, Multnomah County had a seventeen million dollar Tiger grant to fix the, uh, funding gap in the Selwood Bridge. And most recently, we had a, a grant for the North River Gate Crossing in River Gate Industrial Area with the Port of Portland. Uh, this, this time jurisdictions are going after grants, uh, as small as five million and as large as twenty-five million. We are going after fifteen million. Uh, the project is associated with the USPS site. Uh, you're very likely, uh, familiar with the site here bounded by Northwest Hoyt and Lovejoy and Northwest Ninth to Broadway, former home to the USPS, uh, Distribution Center and still home to a small retail site. The, that would fund the Phase One street infrastructure across the site, in particular Northwest Johnson Street and Northwest Kearney Street from Ninth Avenue over to Broadway through the site, as well as some intersection improvements at Lovejoy and Ninth. Uh, what, what does this project do? Well, it's very much an economic development, uh, focused project that we believe will score well with those metrics for the grant. These two streets would unlock about seventy percent of the development potential of the site. The site as a whole, uh, could accommodate up to eighty-eight hundred jobs, uh, to twenty-four hundred new households, including about six hundred fifty thousand square feet of affordable housing.
Excuse me, uh, if I may interrupt, uh, before you leave this site. So today, today we own this site, right?
That is correct.
With this, if we are successfully getting this grant, will the city of Portland continue to own this site?
Uh, in the short term, yes. Maybe I'll defer this one over to Lisa and Sarah.
All right. I, oh, I can wait, uh, for later, but, uh, that, that, that's an important question for me. Thank you.
I know, please, Sarah, if you want, if you want to, um, summarize the, the future disposition, disposition of the site.
Certainly. Um, good morning, Commissioners, Mayor Wheeler. My name is Sarah Harple with Prosper Portland and the project manager for the Broadway Corridor. Um, as Steve was noting, that the, um, extension of these two streets through the post office site is kind of a critical path for development to occur on the site. So Prosper Portland and the Portland Housing Bureau jointly own the site today. And in the future, we'll be selling individual parcels for redevelopment, whether through Prosper Portland or directly through the Portland Housing Bureau. Uh, but these streets are necessary to create those development parcels for that, those future sales.
Uh, thank you. And, uh, this is going to be a longer conversation, but I, we are not, I guess my question for you today, as we apply, because we don't know if we're going to get the money, right? My question today is that we're not tying ourselves into any scheme by, uh, by applying for this grant, are we?
Um, no. So in September of two thousand twenty, City Council approved the Funding and Finance Plan, um, that provided both, as well as a separate action that approved a local improvement district. So those are the funding sources between the local improvement district and a match between, um, P-Bot that would have otherwise funded these streets. So if successful, this will actually be reducing the obligation, um, on the city, Prosper Portland and the Housing Bureau.
So again, I, I just want to be clear. We are having conversations against Prosper and the Housing Bureau, and what it's going to look like in the future. I just want to make sure that no decision we make today actually is, uh, forcing the city into, uh, uh, a permanent solution, uh, in the future, right? Uh, this, this will not impact the conversation that we've been having about the future of Prosper and housing. Is that correct?
That is correct. I mean, those components, whether it's the master plan or the approval of the funding and finance plan already exists, it would simply be reducing that financial burden.
Not sure you answered my question, but thank you. I'll let us go on.
There would be no additional future obligation.
Okay.
Please continue. Sorry, Stephen. I, I guess I tracked. I, I, I just had to ask that question on the public record. Thank you. Not that I actually got the answers looking for, but I, 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 I'm close. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, in, in summary, this grant will simply offset our, our funding, our, our local funding sources for this project and, and help reduce, uh, some of those, those liabilities. And, uh, that may get addressed here in, uh, in a few slides. Thank you, Sarah. Uh, just some more additional details on the street designs themselves. Like Kearney Street will be a more typical, uh, urban street that you would see, for example, in Old Town Chinatown or the Pearl District, sixty-foot wide right-of-way, two lanes, on-street parking, furnishing zone, seven-and-a-half-foot sidewalks. Johnson Street will be a wider, more special street with a two-way bikeway and wider sidewalks. In particular, Johnson Street will be, um, a bit of a special street connecting Union Station with Points West. It will feature a two-way cycle track that extends to the Northwest Johnson Neighborhood Greenway to the west and also serve as a potential retail main street for the USPS site, uh, in, at least in the development as envisioned in the master plan. What are the benefits of the grant to the city? Well, the, so the grant, um, would reduce our shared financial burden between P-Bot and Prosper Portland and Portland Housing Bureau and the city at large. P-Bot's transportation system development charge liability would be reduced by about two-and-a-half million dollars. The local improvement district that is already adopted on the site, uh, you know, that, that will become part of liability for the future private owners as well as the Housing Bureau. This grant would offset, uh, much of that. For the Housing Bureau, that would reduce their LID component by about one-and-a-half million dollars. The LID burden on private development would be reduced further. And that's not just a private benefit. That's also increasing the capacity for the private development to deliver on community benefits regarding, uh, for example, labor and participation in, in the project. And then overall, for the entire city general fund, it reduces general fund risk by offsetting a large LID that needs, uh, short-term upfront borrowing in order to move forward. So it reduces that risk, uh, for the entire city. It's also a benefit to P-Bot, again, because of the extension of the Johnson Neighborhood Greenway connecting Union Station, uh, big regional transportation facility to neighborhoods to the west, Old Town Chinatown, Pearl, Slab Town, Northwest Portland. And it'll leverage, uh, up to four million square feet of smart growth development. This is dense development that would support P-Bot's mode-share goals of, uh, encouraging development that encourages more walking and biking, transit use, uh, and affordable housing with connectivity and proximity to site amenities and public spaces. Uh, so we think there are broad benefits for both the project as well as getting the grant. Um, we do not get the grant. We will still be able to pay for the project. As Sarah mentioned, we have a local improvement district on the site, uh, that has a total capacity of up to twenty-three million. And we have transportation system development charges up to five million. The Phase One infrastructure is slightly less than that, about twenty-two million dollars. So we have the funding mechanisms for that. The grant would offset those and significantly reduce those, uh, those liabilities. It would reduce our LID down to about six million. It would reduce our system development charge, uh, contributions to about one million dollars if we got the grant. And finally, uh, this is just a timeline. The grant applications are due next month. Relatedly, will be before, uh, this council in May with a series of intergovernmental agreements between Prosper Portland and the bureaus related to the USPS site. We should hear from the federal government as early as August if we get the grant, though previous rounds, it's been more like September or October. Um, also around that time, we intend to issue a request for proposals for construction manager, general contractor services for the street projects, complete our design, complete pre-construction, and start construction in the summer of twenty-three with completion at the end of two thousand twenty-four, of course, subject to change. Uh, the grant could add a little bit of time regarding environmental processes, and of course, any, uh, unknown site conditions could extend the project slightly. Uh, but Prosper Portland, P-Bot are, are aware of those, uh, schedule risks and are moving, uh, with, forward with your authorization to complete the grant application. Thanks for your time. Sarah and I could take any questions.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Steve, I'm curious about why the IGAs are being rushed, uh, to be completed by May when we won't even know if we have the grants yet.
Uh, yeah, the IGAs are, uh, cover, uh, much larger topics than just the grant. They, they cover items related to our funding blend between, uh, the bureau and Prosper. We did think about that, you know, if the grant comes in, it would change our funding blend between the two bureaus. So that, that is, uh, a good point. There are other topics, though, and perhaps Sarah can, um, summarize, uh, what, what some of the other IGAs proposed.
If Sarah would hold for just a sec, uh, based on our budget meeting this week where we were talking, you know, we're going to be having a deeper conversation, and I'm very concerned that signing the IGA in May, uh, where we won't know until August if we've got the grant, and the city council has not had an opportunity to have a fuller conversation about Prosper and the Housing Bureau's future, that we will be in a position where we will be forced to do things that we as a council have not made a decision to do. So I'm concerned about the timing, and, uh, just on the surface, I think May is too soon for an IGA if the council has not had that deeper conversation. Because I don't want to be put in a position as a council member that we've written for a grant, and then I'm forced to do something over a decade that we've had no conversations on. So I, I, I just want to be really clear about that. Uh, there are conversations that must be had if, in fact, we receive this grant. And again, I'm excited about applying for the grant because it gives us an opportunity to really think thoroughly about how we build this, the last lands that the city owns, pretty much, and how we make sure that Portlanders will benefit from that. So I just want to be very cautiously optimistic that we need, we have more work to do before we are, we really understand, uh, how we're moving forward. So, uh, again, I, I'm not worried about applying for the grant because applying for it is just applying for it. If we don't get it, we have to have another conversation. But I don't want to be put in this position where I'm forced to vote on something that decisions have been made because we supply, we applied for a grant that we got. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Sarah and I will make sure our, our respective directors are engaging different council offices on the IGA topic.
I can speak to the status of kind of why we're bringing the IGAs in May. So again, in September of two thousand twenty, City Council approved what we refer to as the Omnibus Ordinance, um, that put together the funding package between all of the public partners and the expectations on the private sector. And at that time, within that ordinance, you directed staff to come back to you with a set of IGAs that were consistent with those financial commitments were approved at that time. So the IGAs that we were bringing back to you are consistent with the prior approvals that you have made. They do not contemplate new or increased obligations or contributions between the bureau partners, but they are simply spelling out those, um, those investment commitments that were confirmed by council as well as the roles and responsibilities of moving the project forward. For example, Prosper Portland's responsibility for demolishing the building and coordinating with the design efforts that, um, P-Bot is leading currently. Uh, it also speaks to design processes around the open space in, in partnership with parks, as well as some off-site utilities. So those, um, projects are continuing to move forward consistent with your authorization, and we just needed to codify those in more detailed roles and responsibilities. Should we be successful in the RISE grant, we would come back and amend and reduce the financial obligations carried, carried by the bureau and by the, uh, local improvement district.
Thank you for that, Sarah. Let me just say that a lot has changed since that agreement was reached in two thousand twenty. Uh, the amount of private investments that have taken place in the city of Portland since then, four billion dollars of private dollars that we have, that, that have no outcomes, that aren't actually helping us actually build a city that we want to build. Um, I, we have not looked since that, that federal tax giveaway happened about what's different now and how do we need to adjust to that, right? I, I, again, I, I, it's like, the, the world has changed, and I don't, I don't like us operating as if the world hasn't changed that we're operating. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Kealan, do we have any individuals sign up to testify on this one?
No, Mayor, no one's saying it.
All right, very good. Please call the roll.
Rubio.
I just want to say this is an exciting, um, opportunity. Um, I want to say thanks to, to Steve and Sarah and, um, Commissioners Hardesty, the mayor, and also Commissioner Ryan, um, for bringing this forward. And I, uh, will keep my fingers crossed. I vote, I.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Steve and Sarah. That was a great presentation. As I mentioned in earlier remarks, securing this grant will go a long way toward establishing the first phase of affordable housing development on my own, on land owned by the Housing Bureau and Prosper Portland. on my own, on land owned by the Housing Bureau and Prosper Portland. This fifteen million in savings that you spelled out on Phase One infrastructure work would be a big win for our city and a big win for housing Portlanders. Good work. Let's, I'm crossing my fingers to Commissioner Rubio. I vote aye.
Hardesty.
I remember that the Housing Bureau has no money to build the affordable housing that is required with the USPS site. When we asked them at council, there was, they don't have one dollar yet. So again, I, I, I don't want to assume that what we thought was going to happen will happen. I'm very excited about us applying for this grant, but I absolutely think that we need to have a deeper conversation about if we get the grant, then what? And what has changed since twenty-twenty? Since there's so much private investment that's taking place downtown right now. Again, I, I, what, what we do in this project will matter for a generation to come. And if it doesn't serve Portlanders, then we have failed miserably. I vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. We will now go to the regular agenda. Item number two hundred, a report, please.
Excuse me, Mayor. There, there was that, that accidental amendment that I made. Is that just lying?
Why don't we assume it is just so we have our legal i's dotted and t's crossed?
Excellent.
Is this, is this the item, Commissioner?
Yes, Mayor, this is the item that I needed to actually make a motion to replace Exhibit C.
Okay, very good.
Sorry to jump in. I'm just confirming two oh six is the, is the item for the substitute exhibit, correct?
Commissioner Hardesty.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, we're, we're on two hundred, so not yet.
Okay.
I, I may vote against this just for the heck of it. It's, it certainly won't come as any surprise by the time it gets here. All right.
Long day, Mayor.
They, they all are, but at least we're still smiling and that's important, too. Item number two hundred. Kealan.
Accept bid of Landis and Landis Construction LLC for the Stark Trunk Relief Structure for two million eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Thank you. As part of their Large Squirrel Sewer Rehabilitation Program, the Bureau of Environmental Services has identified a need to construct a sewer relief structure at the intersection of Southeast Third Avenue and Southeast Stark Street. This report authorizes construction of a sewer relief structure, an outlet conduit which will provide flood protection and prevent surface flooding in this area. Once again, Chief Procurement Officer, Biko Taylor is here to present the report. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler, City Council. I'm Biko Taylor, the Chief Procurement Officer. I'll start with item two hundred. On December sixteenth, council approved ordinance one nine zero six four six. The bureau's overall budget on this project was two point four million dollars. Procurement Services issued an invitation to bid on January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two with a due date of February twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. We received two bids in total. Landis and Landis Construction was the low bidder. This was bid under a low bid methodology and Landis was the low bidder. Their bid was two point eight seven million dollars and I'm just giving an estimate, this is not necessarily the exact number. And that was nineteen percent over budget. Let's get to the aspirational goals on this project. So out of the two point eight seven million, Landis decided to self-perform sixty-eight point three percent of that work, which left roughly thirty-two percent for subcontractors. On this project, we have twenty-two percent certified co-bids subcontractors with sixteen point four six percent of those contractors identifying as MBE, either African-American female, Asian Pacific male, Hispanic female, and Hispanic male. So that's sixteen point four six percent MBE. I think where we could get better here is continuing to build capacity for those that would service subcontractors on these projects. And it's at Landis and Landis, it's at their disposal how much they're going to self-perform. I think they're self-performing a significant percentage of work that could be completed by MBEs. Any questions on two, item two hundred?
Colleagues, any question on this item? Kealan, do we have any public testimony on this report?
No one signed up.
Very good. And Biko, does that complete your presentation?
That completes my presentation.
Excellent. Thank you. Well done. Kealan, please call the roll. I'm sorry, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
Some of.
Motion from Hardesty. Any second, please?
Second.
That sounded like Maps, Commissioner Maps. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Rubio.
I just want to say to Director Taylor, thank you so much for your clear report on this. It was very refreshing to have that level of detail and analysis. And with that, I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Director Taylor. It was a great report and you have an ability to actually speak in language that I think anyone could understand if they tuned in. I also really appreciate that. I vote aye.
Hardesty.
Thank you, Director Taylor. I'm looking forward to your continued transformation of procurement. I'm happy to vote aye.
Maps.
I want to thank Director Taylor for his work on this important project. When we get this done, it will help relieve flooding in inner southeast Portland. That is one of the many reasons why I'm glad to see this move forward, and that's one of the many reasons why I am voting aye.
Wheeler.
I vote aye. The report's accepted. Thank you, Director Taylor, for that presentation. Next up, item two zero one is also a report.
Accept bid of Paul Brothers, Inc. for the Arleth Heights Park Project for six million eight hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and seven dollars.
This report authorizes construction for the Arleth Heights Park Project. The Arleth Heights Park Project is located in the Brentwood-Darlington neighborhood, but it's also adjacent to both the Woodstock as well as the Ardernville-Johnson neighborhoods. This project will enhance natural areas, create new trails, and provide amenities for play and sports as well as picnic and lawn space. In short, it sounds fantastic. It's also going to provide a Portland loop as well as environmental observation areas. Chief Procurement Officer Taylor is still here to present this item as well. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. So city council approved the ordinance for this project. That ordinance was one nine zero six zero three on November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. The engineering estimate on this project was right over seven, a smidge over seven million. Procurement Services issued an invitation to bid on December ninth, two thousand twenty-one with a due date of January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. We received five bids. This was also bid under the low bidder methodology. Paul Brothers Incorporated was the low bid on this project. Their bid came over at a little over six point eight million dollars. We had a twenty percent aspirational goal set on this project as well. And I'll give you a brief breakdown of the numbers on this project. Sixty-four percent of this project would be, will be self-performed by Paul Brothers, meaning they subcontracted roughly thirty-six percent of this project out to the community for subcontract. We did not perform well in the area of MBE. We have fourteen point seven percent certified co-bids contractors. The vast majority of those contractors were Caucasian. Only point two, only point two-two percent of this contract at the time was awarded to MBEs, but since, we've added three point six point, three point six seven since bid opening and also, that's a collaboration between Paul Brothers and the Procurement Services Division to increase participation in this project. Overall, twenty-four percent of the subcontractors were non-co-bid certified. That concludes my report and I'll open up for questions.
Colleagues, any questions on this report? Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Biko. Yeah, I appreciate you pointing out what was obvious to me when I looked at this contract. It's almost seven million dollar contract with almost two million of it being contracted out and very little dollars actually getting into the hands of communities of color. And this is the kind of, this is the kind of project that I've seen traditionally come through the city council with the aspirational goals. And I just want you to know that I see what you see. And as far as I'm concerned, this is woefully inadequate, but clearly, this is, this is where we are at this moment. These are the kind of changes I know you will be making, Director Taylor. And so I look forward to when we don't see any more seven million dollar contracts that just barely puts any money in the hands of a minority and women-owned firm. So I appreciate you and I appreciate your attention to this issue, but I'm not impressed with this contract at all. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Director Taylor. I appreciate the way you explain things again. When you, but I want to give you a chance to explain further of the good work that you did to get an additional three point six seven, is that what I recall, in additional co-bid? The collaboration that you did with the, with the Paul Brothers, could you explain what that collaboration looks like? Because that's the type of effort that we really appreciate here at the council, and I just wanted to hear what, what that's like.
Well, Paul Brothers has been working with our compliance department and also our new inclusive contracting manager to increase the percentage of MBE participation. We have to give credit to Paul Brothers for coming back to the table and be open and, and to keen to be open-minded around increasing that percentage even post-war. So we give credit to Paul Brothers and also internally staff for bringing Paul Brothers solutions and partners that can increase the participation on this project.
I just wanted to give you a chance to explain that further because that's the type of effort that I haven't heard before you got here as much. And so I just want you to explain further on what you and your team did to work with the general contractor to make it a little bit better. I appreciate that.
And it's ongoing. Thank you, Commissioner.
I, I could tell, yeah. Anyway, it's about relationships and I appreciate that you're reaching out and doing those conversations. Thanks.
Biko, I think one thing that, I'm sorry, Director Taylor, one thing that would help me would be the second area when contractors have some contractors that are not MWBE. I would like to also have it listed, the ethnicity of the firm, who owns that firm, because I think we will all see something very different if in fact this firm that tells us who's getting the contracts actually had that data for the ones that are not co-bid certified. Can we stop making that happen on these reports?
Absolutely. We have that for you and I can brief your staff and provide you with a copy of the granular data around that.
I actually really prefer it to be on a document that the council is going to see because I think it will tell the story without us having to say it every time we have a contract in front of us.
We'll make a note of it and provide that information.
Thank you, Director.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Commissioner Rubio, is that you, Commissioner Rubio, the moves?
Second.
And Commissioner Hardesty, seconds. Any further discussion on the reports? And then please call the roll.
Rubio.
I want to thank you, Director Taylor, for your presentation on this. It was very important to have. We too had questions when, you know, when looking at this and we appreciate all the hours that Director Taylor has been working with our team and working with Paul Brothers to move us closer to better equity outcomes. And we'll be monitoring this, but again, are grateful for this collaboration and that we have your eyes on this as well, Director. Regarding the park, this is an exciting project that is a long time coming for the Arleth Heights area neighbors and community. So I am voting aye.
Ryan.
Yes, it's an exciting moment to vote aye on for the Good Neighbors in Arleth Heights. And also just want to acknowledge again, Director Taylor, your, your, your leadership. It's a really refreshing. I vote aye.
Hardesty.
I want to thank Commissioner Rubio. This is a project that has been long in the works and the community is desperately waiting for this project to be done. I want to thank Director Taylor because again, I, I believe that we've got the right procurement manager that won't allow us to continue to, to be lax and holding people accountable for what we say we want to do. And so I'm very happy to vote aye.
Maps.
This is a good project, which I'm glad to see move forward. I'd like to thank Director Taylor for his staff's work on this. For these reasons and more, I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The report is accepted. Item one oh two, please. I'm sorry, two oh two.
Authorized contract with Stellar J Corporation for Southwest Upper Hall Street and Southwest College Landslide Abate for two million thirty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Colleagues, this is an emergency ordinance. It authorizes construction to replace a significantly storm-damaged dry stack stone retaining wall on Southwest College Street and to stabilize the slope on Southwest Upper Hall Street, which has failed due to a landslide. The retaining wall directly supports public traffic and it presents a hazard to public safety as it continues to dislodge structural stones and bulge outward at its tallest point. The slope is only temporarily stabilized and it's in need of a long-term solution to secure the public right-of-way. I'll hand it off to Director Taylor to present this ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. Another P-Bot project, Procurement Services issued the invitation to bid on this project November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one with the due date of January fourth, two thousand twenty-two. And we received two bids. The award went to Stellar J Corporation under the low bid methodology. The bid came in at a little over two million dollars. The bids came in a little high due to Stellar J and other bidders. They cite high labor demand in the market for why this bid came in high. A couple of points on the aspirational goals. Yet again, the city standard twenty percent aspirational goals apply to this project. Stellar J self-performed fifty-three percent and right under forty-five percent of the project was subcontracted to co-bid certified firms. Forty-four percent of this contract was awarded to an MBE firm, specifically a Hispanic male for drill, for drilling shaft and micropiling. So forty-four percent of the contract awarded by Stellar J to a certified MBE firm. That concludes my report. Any questions?
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Taylor. A hundred and thirty-two percent over estimate is not what I would consider a little over the estimate. Can you go into dates? I mean, that is significantly higher. Why would we do this? I know it's an emergency. I know it's something we got to repair, right? Because the slide is still sliding. But that is not a little over, in my view.
Commissioner Hardesty, if you allow, I can work with P-Bot to get more granular numbers and a report to you on the labor numbers here. I don't have them in front of me, but I agree, a hundred and thirty-two percent is eye-opening.
Yeah.
But I believe it's more attributable to the, to the schedule on this project with lesser extent to the labor market. So, and that's just me giving you my opinion there, but I can provide you with a more granular analysis on why the estimate and the actual costs where the delta was so substantial between the two.
And I think I have a P-Bot representative here that would be happy to weigh in on this question. Is that right, Mr. Shankar?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if you want me to step in now or do you want?
Now would be good.
Okay. So, yeah, so, good morning, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners. I appreciate being here in front of you. And I do appreciate starting off with the string quartet. So I'm voting for that next time again I show up. So yes, this, this project was very concerning that we got, we were almost twice what we estimated. I have a presentation that I can run quickly through with you, but just a couple of things. This is an extremely specialized operation. There are very few drillers on the West Coast who can perform this type of work. The location, it's a very difficult location. We're on a steep, steep residential area on Southwest College and Southwest Upper Hall. It's a difficult terrain, steep slopes. There's limited access for equipment. There's no staging.
You made my point. You're good. I, I don't need, I don't need the PowerPoint, but I, I think those are important keys, right? Because I know, just as an elected leader, when I see something as a hundred and thirty-two percent over estimates, that catches my attention. But you've just made a compelling argument. I'd love to get this, if you have information, feel free to share it with the commission offices. But you've just made a compelling argument. I'd love to get this, uh, if you have information, feel free to share it with the commission offices. But you've made the case for me right now. I, I know the area and I know the slide that's happening. And so, thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Thank you all.
And my question, I had the same question as, I had the same question as Commissioner uh, Hardesty. The um, cost overruns uh, here are remarkable. Um, I also want to give you an opportunity to unpack that a little bit. Uh, well first, I look forward to a briefing. If you could come to our offices and give us uh, some more detail on this, that would be great. And. What went wrong here? Was the um. Original engineer's estimate just. Bad or did, has COVID changed the world in such a way that we might expect? Projects to come in at twice the original estimated cost.
I mean, if you, it, it, technically speaking, this, this was, this engineer's estimate was done two, two years ago. So obviously before uh, COVID hit. Um, and yes, COVID is a large, uh, large reason uh, why we're at this cost overrun. Um, but it, but I wouldn't say it's the whole reason, right? The, the list I just gave you, that, that's a compelling list as to why this project is, is, is a. Is expensive and there's a lot of risk. Don't, you, you can't forget about the risk that contractors uh, are willing to take on to perform this work. Um, and again, there are only two bidders that uh, that bid this project. Um, you know, and, and that's a, that's a clear uh, clear signal to us that uh, look, there is a labor shortage. Uh, this is, it, it's difficult work. Um. And yeah, that's uh, you know, I, you know, this is the time we're in. It, it's, it's very difficult. Uh, very difficult time that we're in right now uh, with, with contractors across the, across the country.
Uh, thank you very much. And uh, should you have any other background information, it'd be great if you could send it over to our offices. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, do we have any public testimony on the side of Q?
No one signed up.
All right. Very good. It's an emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Rubio.
I want to thank uh, PBOT and Commissioner Hardesty uh, for bringing this project forward. Um, and thanks for all the additional information. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Uh, thank you, Jaren, for those uh, those responses. That was very helpful to hear. And I vote aye.
Hardesty.
Uh, they, thank you so much for the assist uh, uh, Chicago with uh, this uh, uh, presentation. Thank you so much, uh, Director Taylor. I'm very happy to vote aye and I really appreciate uh, all the information that we were able to obtain uh, from this agenda item. Really good work. I look forward to seeing us patch up that slide. I vote aye.
Maps.
Um, I appreciate the presentation. This is a critical, mission critical project. We got, we gotta do it. I am concerned about the cost overruns here, not necessarily because I questioned this project, but I do wonder if it. Um, is a, um, if it anticipates future cost overruns as we try to do nature and complicated infrastructure projects. Uh, despite those concerns, I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Vote aye. The project is obviously critical. It's urgent. And uh, even though there is a significant cost overrun here, I, I fully accept the reasons that were given. Uh, I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, please. Two oh three.
Pay settlement of Julia Leggett bodily injury lawsuit for the sum of twelve thousand dollars involving the Portland Police Bureau.
Colleagues, this is an emergency ordinance. It resolves a bodily injury claim filed against the city of Portland in June of twenty twenty. Deputy City Attorney Ryan Bailey and Senior Claims Analyst Rosalia. Radich are here to present the ordinance. Welcome, Ryan and Rosalia. Thanks for being here.
Good morning, everyone. Um, on June five, twenty twenty at approximately eleven PM, uh, Ms. Julia Leggett was participating in a protest in front of the Justice Center in downtown Portland, Oregon. Ms. Leggett alleges that an officer with the Portland Police Bureau fired uh, a quote flashbang munition into her leg. The city disputes the allegations and the case was defended by the city attorney's office. The case was initially set for trial. However, after postponements due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. The city attorney's office, risk management, in consultation with the Portland Police Bureau, determined that it was in the best interest of the community to attempt mediation. Uh, the parties attended mediation in November of twenty twenty one and were able, able to reach the compromise settlement, which is before you now. Uh, the settlement has the support of Ms. Leggett, uh, the Portland Police Bureau, Risk Management and the City Attorney's Office.
Very good. Colleagues, any questions on this item? Kealan, do we have any public testimony on this item?
Yes, we have two people signed up.
Very good. Three minutes each. Please name for the record. Go ahead, Kealan.
First up, we have Dan Handelman.
Good morning, Dan.
Uh, good morning, uh, Mayor and Commissioners. Can you hear me? This is Dan Handelman.
Loud and clear. You sound good.
Portland Cop Watch. Okay. Um, so uh. Yeah, Dan Handelman, he him pronouns, I'm with Portland Cop Watch and um, this uh, is an, another incident from a protest from twenty twenty where the city's paying out money that could be going to other. Human needs than trying to repair the damage done to people by Portland police officers. Um, it says that um. The, there was an encounter with the Portland police, which is kind of a very vague um, description of what uh, looks like a very painful wound that was shown on a KATU news story about this incident. With this leg it. Where there's a very serious wound to her leg. Um, and of course, we, we believe that flashbangs were s- stop being used in crowd control. In, I think it was twenty eighteen when Chief Outlaw said that they weren't going to be used anymore. So it might've been another kind of projectile, but I don't know if that's that important in this. Context. Um, in reading the police review board reports, um, there have been several where there have been a um. Binding of misconduct for officers who fired less lethal weapons at people in crowds who weren't necessarily. Uh, actively resisting. And it's not clear whether this is one of those cases. It's also not clear whether this officer. Got held accountable in any way for the damage that was done here. And that's one of the conversations we'd like to hear happen when these settlements come to. City Council. And I should have started by saying, we're not opposed to this settlement in any way. Um. And, but on that note, you know, what we keep encouraging is that you have discussions about policy issues when you talk about. How much money is being paid out by the city for these incidents? And instead. The city went to Salem to try to make it easier for police to use weapons in crowd control situations. Um, and uh, it was because they, police said they were confused about what the rules were supposed to be. This sort of makes it clear there are going to be more incidents like this in the future. Um, uh, it's also the flip side of that is that. When the city okays things where this happens without holding officers accountable or changing the rules. Uh, it becomes a thing where people don't want to come to protest because they're afraid of being hurt by the police. And this is called prior restraint and the city really needs to think about that. Um, so uh, you know, we also had this horrible incident happen. Last month where a vigilante shot people at a protest action and. You kind of wonder where they get the idea that it's okay to do violence against protesters. And sometimes that violent idea might come from the fact that we have state sanctioned violence, both. Here in Portland with the Portland Police and uh, internationally by, you know, governments who used militaries to. Use violence against populations. And I think that, you know, especially with the presentation you had earlier today about what's going on in Ukraine, we need to think about what happens in the countries when the United, United States drops bombs like. They did in Somalia last month. Or in Iraq and Afghanistan and other countries. And you know, it's really incumbent upon the. Council to think about the victims of police violence and the victims of uh, war violence in the same. Uh, in the same breath when, when you're uh, thinking about all the damage that's done by violence by the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next individual, please, Kealan.
Next up, we have Mark Porus.
Hi, for the record, my name is Mark Porus. I use he, him pronouns and I live in northeast Portland. Um, testifying today in support of the settlement for Ms. Leggett. I hope she's recovered uh, from this trauma that she suffered uh, from PPP. Uh, this item was originally on the consent agenda two weeks ago and I asked to have it pulled so that the community. Uh, could learn more about this incident from risk management and the city attorneys. Um, so I'm grateful that they were here, uh, but we didn't really learn too much more about what actually happened. And I continue to believe that every PPP settlement should default to being on the regular agenda. Um, at least until the city gets back in compliance with the DOJ settlement agreement. I know the mayor and Commissioner Hardesty have said they'd talk about changing the parameters for getting settlements on the regular agenda and I'd still like to see that happen. Uh, there's never a bad time to thank city employees for doing good work. So I want to thank Kealan and uh, the rest of the folks in this council clerk's office for always being helpful and responsive uh, when I have questions about agenda items. Uh, last month, um, Stacy Cowan, a city of Portland Office of Government Relations employee. Submitted testimony to the Oregon House Judiciary Committee on behalf of the League of Oregon Cities, Oregon Association Chiefs of Police, the Oregon State Sheriff's Association. And the city of Portland to make it easier for PPP uh, to use tear gas and impact munitions on future peaceful demonstrators. So instead of asking to ban these weapons outright, the city actually asked for and received permission to use them more frequently. Uh, I remember and I'm sure you do too, watching Juan Chavez's presentation to council on Aaron Cantu settlement. Uh, where a PPP officer fired a flashbang grenade that lodged in his skull and, and would have killed him had he not been wearing a bike helmet. In this case, Ms. Leggett was also walking away from police, just like Mr. Cantu was. Uh, when she was shot from behind with a flashbang grenade or whatever the other projectile was. Um. So HB four oh oh eight, which the city lobbied for and which became law is going to make it easier for there to be another Julia Leggett, another Aaron Cantu harmed and. Potentially killed by Portland police firing less lethal munitions. And the same legislation actually makes it likely that PPP will again use tear gas on community members. Uh, so since the city seems determined to allow police uh, to use tear gas and less lethal munitions on community members. My ask today is just again for you to please err on the side of transparency. Please stop making us ask to have these settlements pulled from the consent agenda. Uh, the community actually really, we need to know that the cops are not always here to protect us. Uh, sometimes they shoot us. Thanks.
Mr. Porus, I just want you to know the city council has made a decision. I think we had consensus around anything over fifty thousand would automatically be on the regular agenda. Um, and not because they aren't all equally important, but you know, uh, council agendas get really, really long sometimes, but. Just so you know, and you can share it with folks that anytime there's a settlement over fifty thousand, it will automatically be on the regular agenda.
Right. Thank, yeah, thanks. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
This is emergency ordinance. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll, Kealan.
Rubio.
I want to acknowledge that as city government, we need, we need to learn from these incidents um, and not repeat practices that may harm or do not serve the community. Um, I appreciate that the parties came together to agree upon a resolution to this matter. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardesty.
I appreciate Dan Handelman and um, our other guests for being here today. Um, and I want to acknowledge that someone was harmed. Someone was harmed. By a public servant and that should just never be. Uh, and I am also very um, uh, committed to supporting this uh, this settlement. And I'm glad the parties came together and all the parties agreed that this is the right outcome uh, from this uh, situation. I vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. The settlement's approved. Item number two oh four, a second reading.
Authorize limited tax revenue refunding bonds through December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Colleagues, this is the second reading. We've already heard a presentation. There's already been an opportunity for public testimony for the business on this item. Seeing none, please call the roll, Kealan.
Rubio.
Um, thank you for bringing this forward. Uh, I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yeah, that was a great presentation last week. Really distinguished between municipal bond, municipal bonds and other bonds. I vote aye.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Item two oh five, also a second reading.
Authorize permanent bonded lien interest rates for installing payment contracts financed by the limited tax improvement bonds twenty twenty two series B.
Any further discussion, colleagues? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Item two oh six, a resolution.
Declare intent to initiate local improvement district formation proceedings to construct street sidewalk and stormwater improvements in the southeast. One hundred and fifty fifth avenue and Main Street, Melmain Drive, Local Improvement District.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been wanting to do this all day long. Um, I have a motion to substitute exhibit C. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, Mayor. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the substitute? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
I have eagerly been awaiting my opportunity to vote for this substitute amendment. And I'm very happy to vote aye.
Uh, I was sure you were gonna vote no just to make me crazy.
About it. I thought about it, but nah, at the end of the day, I have to be on the straight and narrow. I vote aye. The substitute's now on the table. Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a LID that is being created by people who want it. I have Andrew uh, here from Portland Bureau of Transportation. Uh, to provide additional information on this particular LRD. Uh, and let me just, uh, uh, Andrew, do you want to give a brief overview uh, of my colleagues on this? Short sweep to the point?
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. Andrew Abbey, Local Improvement District Administrator. Um, I don't have a presentation today. I think I'll be fairly brief. Uh, maybe just to inform the council what you just voted on with the amendment. We had a mapping error on the map. And it simply overstated the length of the uh, street improvement that we were planning on Main Street and Melmain Drive. Um, there is no change to the financial aspects of the LID. This is just simply correcting the map. To align with what the original scope of the project was. And I want to thank the council for not amending the. Certain stark ordinance and the Broadway, Broadway corridor ordinance to insert my map into those other ordinances, but that would have gotten a little messy this morning. So thank you.
Lose them a lot, right? You could have thanked your commissioner for that. Yeah, but luckily I, I figured it out while we were still at the right place. I see Commissioner Maps may have a question.
Uh, yeah, uh, um, Andrew, it actually would be helpful for me if you could unpack this lid a little bit. Um, I think it's unusual or unlike uh, uh, anything I've seen so far. In that parks will be paying the entire amount of the lid. Is that correct?
It is, Commissioner, and uh, I, I think I anticipated your questions and. I uh, were fully prepared to kind of walk through council what we're doing today. We'll have uh, a more detailed presentation when we bring back an ordinance on April twentieth. But let me on a high level state for you the unusual nature of this LID. You're entirely correct, Commissioner Map. This is not. Uh, a normal and customary LID, but then every LID that we do is unique in its own way. So the business objectives of this LID are really twofold. Number one, um. We wanted to partner, we meaning PBOT, really wanted to partner with parks. Because parks for many years has, has had a very diligent effort. To build new parks in East Portland, which historically has been underserved, but with parks. This particular park is going to be a crown jewel. It's going to be uh, a wonderful park that attracts um. People from all over East Portland, not just um, the Centennial Neighborhood. And I have Sandra Berzow here on the, on the council session if you want more information from her. But to put it succinctly, Commissioner Maps, um, the park development is going through the land use process and. Title thirty three, um, for better or worse is a bit um. Inflexible. I'm not saying bad, but just inflexible. You have to follow the land use code. And there is a special dispensation. And code that allows that when a local improvement district is formed, that it can expedite the permitting approval. So. That front and center, Commissioner Maps, is why we are doing this with an LID rather than what we call the public work permitting. The secondary uh, business reason for doing this LID is PBOT also had. Two capital improvement projects in this area. One was the four M project and the other was the one fifty's Greenway project. Um, that again, didn't necessarily integrate that well with the land use process. And we saw the LID as an opportunity to tweak the scope a little bit. Um, so that the park frontage improvements that are required of the condition of land use would also interact better with the two. PBOT CIP projects, which is another way of saying that we didn't want parks to spend this hard earned money to build something that would be throwaway. And wouldn't work well with what we had planned for this particular park improvement. And then I would just add a. And then I would just add a third point that after we had, uh, already had started the LID discussion to achieve those two objectives, we also, uh, heard a fair amount of community feedback and Commissioner Hardesty, I, I'm sure you're aware of this, but the original plan along market, or excuse me, Main and Melmain Drive was to remove a fair amount of on-street parking. And this particular project allows us to tweak the scope so that we don't have to do that and we can address some community concerns. So I'll kind of pause it there and see if council has any more questions. And again, I have Sandra Berzow, uh, with me to, if you have any questions about the park.
Commissioner Maps has a question.
Uh, Andrew, have we done, have we used this technique before?
We have, Commissioner. Um, the most recent example, we did a LID for Coonamox Park in the Cooley neighborhood at northeast 52nd and Alberta. Um, again, it was a nice opportunity to coordinate the park improvements with the LID improvements. Um, and it also freed up, this project, like the other one, also helped free up the bandwidth of, uh, park staff to do the hard work that they have ahead of them of building the park and worry a little bit less about building, designing and building the, the frontage improvement. So we just thought this was a comparative advantage for both of our bureaus.
Okay, um, you learn something new every day. I appreciate that explanation. It would be helpful to be, if at some point in the future, if our, my staff could get a briefing on this. I think this is, um, a space that we just haven't seen before and we're still trying to figure out. Uh, thank you.
Happy to do that.
Yeah, those are coming back in April, as, uh, Andrew said. So I, I certainly look forward to us continuing this conversation.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Kealan, do we have any public testimony on this resolution?
No one signed up.
All right, very good. Please call the roll.
Rubio.
Uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Hardesty and Andrew for this presentation. Um, I'm looking forward to this. Um, I vote aye.
Ryan.
Thank you, Andrew. That was a great, uh, conversation. I vote aye.
Hardesty.
Uh, thank you, Andrew, and thank you, Sandra, for being here. Even though we didn't tap into your expertise today, we will in the near future. Uh, this is a good, uh, multi-bureau project and I'm excited about the potential that it will bring forward. I'm happy to vote aye.
Maps.
Um, as always, I, I appreciate Andrew's presentations and projects. Um, I look forward to learning more about this, uh, uh, unique approach to building this important park. Um, I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I vote aye. The resolution is adopted. Thank you, Andrew. We'll go back to the item on the consent agenda, which was pulled. And that was item number 194.
Authorize Director of Parks and Recreation to negotiate and execute one or more lease agreements for an east zone maintenance facility.
Uh, and who pulled it?
It was me, Mayor. Commissioner Hardesty pulled it because, uh, we just had a very detailed work session around, uh, the infrastructure needs of the city of Portland. And I understand that this is very specific for parks' maintenance needs, but we have other bureaus that also have maintenance needs. So I wanted to have a conversation about why a 10-year contract and how does this lead into the bigger, uh, city needs around maintenance? Uh, you know, uh, facilities, uh, it, when it, when, uh, when a earthquake happens, we're going to lose most city, uh, vehicles. So I didn't want this to just slide by on consent without having a conversation about how we connect the dots.
Very good. Um, Commissioner Rubio, this is your item. I don't know if you want to respond to that or if there's, uh, somebody to present.
Yeah, I'll just, um, introduce someone who can, uh, say a little more about this. So as you all know, in, in November of 2020, uh, we passed a local levy, Parks and Recreation passed a local levy, um, option that enabled us to create more access and hire more staff aimed at serving the community better. Um, so in order to provide adequate resources for these, um, services, uh, the levy also provided funding for additional parks and recreation vehicles, equipment, and operational related, and operational related facilities to be procured. So I'm also happy to turn it over to Dylan Paul from Portland Parks and Recreation's Property Group, who will provide us with more context about this request, uh, to enter into negotiations for a new east zone maintenance facility that will specifically benefit service levels in northeast Portland. So Dylan.
Yeah, good morning, um, Mayor, members of city council. I'm joined here by, um, Parks Leadership Staff, also a member of my property team, Donna Wilder, and, um, OMF, Colin Goble, if there are questions. I'm going to go ahead and share my presentation here. I just put together, uh, brief talking points. Let's see if I can get this to work here. Everybody see that? Excellent. So I'm here to talk today about a new Parks and Recreation East Zone Maintenance Facility. Parks and Recreation's local option levy is allowed for the hiring of new staff. The ability for Parks and Recreation to provide more consistent service levels across the city in order to provide levy-funded, uh, commitments. Parks and Recreation now needs a yard and operation space in northeast Portland. My presentation today will provide a brief overview and a summary of our request to execute one or more lease agreements. Uh, I'd like to remind council that the subject property is under current discussions with the property owner. With that, I will have the next slide here. So, um, with the support and guidance from OMF and city policy, we've confirmed that there are no other bureaus that can support parks with this, uh, space need. Um, in line with, uh, city policy, we looked at existing properties, existing, um, buildings that we have. Um, oftentimes the city's open space designation limits parks' ability to make use of existing facilities. And thus, a lease was determined, um, the most viable path forward and also, um, the only, uh, vehicle that was, um, able to be funded by the levy. So, um, the space needs, um, of this, uh, must accommodate levy growth timeline, which is very aggressive, the hiring of, uh, over 50 new positions that need to be located in this area, 60 seasonal staff with vehicles and equipment. Uh, needs to primarily accommodate yard and operation space. Office is, um, available, but it's an auxiliary function, function of this lease, and it must be turnkey and ready to use. So if you look at this map, shows, uh, all those little pink flags are, uh, parks' maintenance facilities. In the, um, upper right hand corner, that pink outlined box is the location of the new proposed, um, northeast, um, maintenance facility. As you can see, um, there are no other maintenance facilities in existence, uh, already in that area. Um, this is a quick, uh, spatial map of, uh, you know, rough drive times. So the red dots in that same area indicate that, uh, most service levels, um, require a 15 to 17 minute drive. Some of them are in excess of 25 minutes. So we know that when staff are, um, in the areas, those areas are maintained at a higher level. So we try to spread our maintenance facilities out across the city to have regional hubs to make sure that our service levels maintain, uh, some level of consistency. The site we're looking at currently is an existing site in use, uh, currently occupied. Uh, it has a shop, uh, vacant lot that would be used for fleet storage, um, and existing office building. The office building is multi-tenant. We would only be using a portion of it as our need primarily, if not office. Uh, it is located right next to Big Four Corner, so a very, uh, important part of our portfolio, uh, collaboration across multiple bureaus out in this area. Um, there's a few photos here. As you can see, the shop space is already really, um, set up for our needs. There's very little, um, change, other than the vacant site across the street, uh, needs to have, um, uh, some, 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 the other details worked out in order to provide for fencing and fleet vehicle use, uh, within the, uh, existing parameters of, uh, the city zoning code. So with that, I'm here for any questions and, uh, comments.
Thank you, Daniel.
Sorry, couldn't quite get the need to work.
Yes, I know. Uh, all of us have been having a little challenges today. Uh, Dylan, that was a great presentation and I thank you. Um, and it was interesting because the site you're looking at is on Airport Way. Um, and, uh, and I, I asked this question again. I, I, you know, I, I know you have a need and I know you're trying to address that need. And my question has absolutely nothing to do with parks directly, but it has to do with the conversation where's a council continuing to have about all these deferred maintenance needs. And one of the big needs we have is, uh, uh, is, 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 is storage, right? Storage of vehicles for a whole host of different bureaus. Um, and ironically, you're going to lease this space for 10 years on Airport Way, where we own property on Airport Way that we are only using a very small percentage of it. So I just don't know where this conversation happens in the city. When we talk about the need to coordinate, right? Uh, this is a 10-year lease was, what, is why this concerns me. Cause if we're really talking about doing things differently, are we really planning to lock us off into a 10-year lease, uh, just to store property and, and for a workplace? I, 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 I find it problematic. So that's why I wanted to pull this and have this conversation. Because it, it's not just about the parks bureau and the parks levy. It's about if we as a council are actually looking at these things holistically or we're still going to do it as one-offs. And 10 years is a long time to be tied into a lease when supposedly we're thinking differently.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I can mention that, um, for parks', um, current need, um, the, the levy is driving the urgency. But also, um, we have been looking at a permanent, um, east zone facility, um, for quite some time. In our experience, it does take five to 10 years, um, for something like that to be developed on our own land. There's several sites in that area that I think could be viable, but the 10-year timeframe is really in line with our expectations to actually acquire or plan or fund, um, something more permanent. And across those, uh, many pink, um, 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 maintenance zones that we have across the city, we have a pretty healthy mix of leased space, owned space, um, and other city bureau, um, utilized space. Um, and, and so I think that it's a great opportunity for us to look at all of those different costs and really hone in what that best solution is. But I would say it's definitely, um, our intent to consider a more permanent facility. Um, but the thought was that it would be at least 10 years for us to get that, um, funded and in place.
And when does the levy expire?
Um, I don't have the exact, exact dates on it, but it was a five-year levy.
So 2025 is when we would expect it to expire unless we do something different since it was past. Oh, maybe it's 2026 because it, it was passed in November 2020, right? So went into effect in 2021, right?
I believe so.
Somewhere between 25 and 26. So you're going to have a lot of years left on your lease when this levy expires. What's the, what's the plan?
Yeah, so our, our finance, uh, manager has reviewed that and it's all been factored into the term on this. So I believe that, uh, if there's more detail needed on that, that we could certainly get back to you on it.
Yeah, I'm just not excited about signing a 10-year lease for a, for what you have funding for, for five years and just knowing that we have, uh, these needs all over the city. So I, this is a great conversation for me to have and I look forward to continuing this conversation with Commissioner Rubio, um, when we get an opportunity to meet.
Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Rubio.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a minute just to kind of, uh, Commissioner Hardesty, I totally hear the point you're raising about we need better, uh, cross-bureau planning around our facilities and capital projects to, to, to take care of our infrastructure, um, and, uh, better cross-planning. So, um, and we're running it up against the urgency of, um, the levy at the same time. So there's no reason we can't keep talking and, and get what we need to do done. Um, so we'll, we'll keep the conversation open, Mr. Har, uh, Commissioner Hardesty, and, um, we care about the same things too. So, um, thanks for your questions and thank you, um, Dylan, for being here and for the presentation.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Uh, 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 one quick question. What, do we have to sign a 10-year lease? What's the magic of a 10-year lease versus a five-year lease?
So I, I will say that we entertained many options. With the lease of this size, um, with the required improvements, um, it is unlikely that we would find an owner willing to do a shorter term than 10 years, though it is possible. Uh, we always seek to have as many options, but as we are in active negotiations, um, we've, um, received indication from this owner that they would not accept anything under that term, given the requirements needed to, for us to move into that site. Um, we did cast a pretty wide net across northeast Portland. Uh, we found, um, uh, very few sites that would accommodate the need. The alternative would be to break up and have multiple, um, facilities, which required additional staff supervision, um, and the cost benefit, um, analysis that we did indicated that it would be best to negotiate at this one site and, uh, see if we can come to terms that were acceptable.
Very good. Is there any public testimony on this item?
Signed up.
Very good. This is emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Rubio.
I just want to, again, thank Dylan for the presentation today and thanks, uh, to my colleagues for the good, uh, conversation. And we will be, uh, monitoring this project as it moves forward. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Dylan, for the presentation. You had me when you showed the map with all the red dots. Um, and so I vote aye.
Hardesty.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio, and thank you so much, Dylan, for the information you provided today. And again, this was not about parks and, uh, the parks levy, but it's about reminding us that we're all interconnected at the city of Portland. And if we have shared needs, we should be looking for how we share, how we fix it collectively. Um, and I thank you so much. I really appreciate Dylan being here. I thank you for your grace, Commissioner Rubio. I'm very happy to vote aye.
Maps.
Um, I appreciate Commissioner Hardesty's call for a holistic cross-bureau approach to asset management. That's a top priority for me too, and I look forward to working with this council to pursuing that important work. Uh, at the same time, I support this project because I think it represents an important step forward for equity in east Portland. And for that reason, I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I vote aye. And the ordinance is approved. Kealan, that completes our business for this morning.
Yes, it does.
Very good. Thanks, everybody. We will see you at 2:00 PM. We are adjourned.